Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Kindly rise for the moment of silence. Now the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Allenson.
Here.
Carmody.
Here.
Bishbein.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Regan.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Alright, and on to the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept or approve Consent Agenda items 3A, 3B, and items 3D through 3I, and 3K through 3U, and item 3V as amended.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent Agenda passes. Item 3C was removed from the agenda. Do I have a motion on 3J?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve a transfer in the amount of $170,000 from regular wages and salaries to replacement pay for the fire department.
Motion made in second. Counselor Laffin, your request is on the side and off the agenda?
Yes, thank you, and I know the chiefs are here, if that's alright, Mr. Chairman, if they can approach the...
Please.
...side. And first of all, I thank Chief Setnare and Chief Wilson for being here tonight. And by way of history, for the new counselors and everybody at home, this has been kind of an ongoing issue, budget transfer item, for the last several years. And I thought it's just healthy and transparent to keep it kind of on top of everything as we discuss so that we can all keep track of the progress. And in a brief chat with Chief Setnare, he said he had a little more detail into the memo we got. So if you just want to present the info based on that memo and then whatever detail else you have, if we have questions after, that'd be great, thank you.
Certainly, alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, good evening, counselors.
And I'm sorry, Chief, I know who you are, but your name is...
Joe Setnare, Fire Chief.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Chief Sam Wilson.
I appreciate the opportunity to, you allowed me to provide some background on the transfer request before you tonight. I'm requesting a transfer from regular salaries and wages to replacement pay to cover an anticipated shortfall in funds in that account that is attributed to retirements, open positions, and unforeseen absence employees with long-term injuries and illnesses, as well as lengthy approved FMLA leave. Minimum staffing, I want to talk a little bit about minimum staffing. As you may know, the fire department requires a minimum staffing on every work shift. These staffing requirements are contractual, but this minimum staffing allows us to staff the apparatus consistently so that we can maintain the ability to meet the needs of the community and provide adequate emergency services. It is also intended to enhance the safety of the firefighters by staffing with appropriate number to perform emergency functions. The replacement pay account covers overtime to maintain the minimum staffing requirements. This account covers all types of leave, including vacation leave, sick leave, workers' compensation, FMLA, required annual continual medical training for paramedics and EMTs, military leave, administrative leave, union business, funeral leave, and sick family leave. The last, past couple of years, we've experienced an unprecedented increase in emergency call volume. This has been inclusive in all types of emergency responses, fires, motor vehicle accidents, EMS calls, rescues, and hazardous material incidents. With this increase in calls comes fatigue. When the department is short-staffed, employees work 24 or even 36 hours straight. And that becomes more commonplace. There's a direct correlation between a high call volume, fatigue, and an increase on on- and off-duty injuries. In the first half of this fiscal year, we had seven employees, seven, on long-term injury and illness leave. Four of those injuries occurred during emergency incidents. Two of them occurred during training, on the training campus, and one occurred off-duty. Recently, as of January 1st, you said two of these employees returned to full duty. One was out for seven months, and the other was out for six months. We currently still have five employees out on long-term injury. One employee recently had surgery, and the others will likely require surgery. We're hopeful that at least three of these employees can return to full duty by the summertime. With regard to injury prevention, the chief officers and the risk manager actively review all on-duty injuries and determine the cause and work towards prevention measures. However, this job comes with inherent risk. I ask, and I expect my people to perform and do extraordinary things every day. They took an oath to put service to the community above themselves. Our training is realistic because it has to be. This is a tough job, physically, emotionally, and mentally. Vacancies and turnover, the department has experienced an extended round of cyclical retirements that occur generally every 20 to 25 years, producing a large number of vacant positions to be filled. The vacant position salaries provides the funding needed to cover the shortfall in the replacement pay account. To fill these vacancies, on average, from requesting an exam to filling these positions, has been averaging five to six months. While these positions are vacant, replacement pay is largely used to maintain minimum staffing requirements. We're also experiencing difficulty in finding qualified candidates suitable for the positions. Competition is fierce among the local fire departments as we compete for a small pool of qualified candidates. We're working actively with HR to develop new methods and strategies to overcome some of these issues. My transfer request before you tonight is intended to get ahead of the curve on the anticipated shortage in the replacement pay account and is fully covered within my departmental budget. We have work to be fully staffed, to our authorized strength, and hope to have most of the injured or ill employees back to full duty in a few months. We will continue to evaluate and work on solutions to minimize vacancies and injuries, which will lessen the impact on the replacement pay account. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to provide some background on my request.
Yes, and Chief, thank you for the summary. You just stated that the balance, you're covering it, it's from the wages account, and that this is all anticipation, so everything to this point, you're still okay? Or are you, have you been, are you about to breach the budgeted line?
No, no, I'm still okay.
Okay, and then, do you expect this to be the only time? I'm not asking, I'm not trying to back you in the corner, just based on current situation in your gut, that this is going to be the only request, or are you going to have to come back in March or April?
I don't plan on coming back. What I did was I waited six months. I knew once all these, I had a cascade and avalanche of injuries.
Right.
That occurred during the summertime. And I was watching it for a while. I typically wait for a six-month snapshot into the fiscal year.
Yeah.
So by the end of December, I was able to get a realistic look at where we were going and anticipate what I may need. I'm not, I'm 9% down in my replacement pay, but what I'm moving over should cover any other anticipated. So I don't believe I'll be back, that's the plan.
Okay, and you said that there were, you still had several open positions, and you talked about having to...
We have, yes, we have just hired two firefighter paramedics, they should be starting February 1st. We just hired another EMT, and we are moving a firefighter or an EMT out of the transport division, promoting him into the fire rescue division. He'll be going to the fire academy. So there's been a lot of movement, we're almost fully staffed. But we have been looking at, there's been some movement, as I said, with people, especially fierce competition among the fire departments. And we've lost, we lost a lot of volunteers this past year to career departments, and we've lost a couple of EMT transport personnel to career departments.
Are any of the firefighters that you hired from the volunteer crew in town?
In September, I hired two volunteers from town.
Okay, good, good. And then, and you said you already, you kind of moved somebody from EMS over to fire department?
That'll occur in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Last budget, we added four firefighters. What was, where are you in relation to all of the vacancies? The ideal number, right? Like, how many firefighters do you want? And how many positions are filled, including the vacancy, the people that are out on injury?
We're currently evaluating that right now, counselor. We're going into the budget season, we're evaluating what our needs are, where we think we need to be, especially in light of injuries and call volume.
Yeah.
We study our analytics on a daily basis to determine what's going on. Right now, we're doing about 23 emergency calls a day. So that's gonna, we just did a little over 8,000 calls this year, emergency calls. And that's a record for us. And I'm on track, I'm anticipating we'll probably do about 85, 8600 this year.
But do you know how many, how close you are to last year's number? Like, if you wanted X amount of firefighters, and we added four?
We added four, they are hired, they got hired...
They got hired, okay, that was, that's based on the question, it's okay.
I apologize. They were hired in September, after a testing process. We, they were hired and were fully staffed on fire rescue.
You were fully staffed as of September, including all the vacancies?
Fire rescue, yes.
Okay, fire rescue, right. This is a budget question, probably? The vacancies, when somebody, not the vacancies, the injuries, when somebody becomes injured, they continue to receive compensation or payment in some sort of manner, is that through an insurance, like workers' comp, whatever?
Part of it.
Part of it?
Yes.
And why I'm asking is, do we stop taking their money out of the general wages and salary line?
No, we actually journal entry that back in so that there's not extra money in that salary account because of that.
Okay, so the replacement pay doesn't necessarily... So the savings that we may have from having somebody off on injury, there are not actually savings necessarily. We still, we still fully pay, and we are now pulling from the replacement pay section.
So we have a self-insured workers' comp fund?
Yeah.
So the portion that gets paid out of workers' comp gets paid out of another fund?
Yeah.
And we charge the salary line item to fund the workers' comp fund to pay them?
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, no, thank you. I'm just, I know we switched staffing models a couple of years ago, that's what we've all kind of talked about or been talking about...
Four years ago.
Four years ago. The, I did my best to pull up budgets based on what we had, I don't, I didn't have last year's from the audit. But replacement pay has nearly doubled. And I, what I, what we've had in our meetings, and I appreciate, is that we do seem to be on a better calibration of what we expect the replacement pay to be. And I'm just trying to figure out if, now four years in, if we still believe that the staffing model shift was, is the way to continue going? Or do we need to pivot at all? Just based on the increases in the overall wages line and the replacement pay line. If it's a different way of operating on a business level, that's a whole separate question. And if it is great, and if that costs more money, then fine, because, you know, we always talk about we're looking to do what Wallingford needs as far as emergency services go. But initially, there was talk about savings. And I haven't seen the savings, and I'm just trying to figure out if the trade-off of the increased cost, or maybe it may have increased a little more before we moved to the staffing model, but it's still gone up quite a bit. Is that worth the model and the business operations that we're getting now?
Well, I would say for the last three years, the budget's been stable since I've been the chief. That shift occurred four years ago. And with the staffing, the new staffing and response model, I would say that we're delivering value-added vital services to the community here that they expect and deserve.
Without question.
And I haven't heard any complaints about service delivery.
No, and I'm just trying to make sure that on the operational level and the background, nobody's complaining about the way that it is out there. And if this is how much it costs to do all that, then that's great. I just want to make sure that that, everybody's on the same page. Because at one point, it was not going to cost this much. And if it is, then fine, that's great. Like, I'm not going to trade it for the quality that we're, of care that we're getting now. I'm 100% not. I'm just trying to figure out where we are and what we expect going forward.
I think previously, with the cost savings, I am not completely sure, that was not my call, but I don't know if it was sold as a cost savings.
Okay.
I thought it was rolled out more, that it was going to be a response model that was going to better serve the community.
Okay. Okay, that's it for me right now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Testa?
Good evening, gentlemen, thank you for being here. Just to make sure everybody understands what's going on, this is, this is an accounting matter on the agenda tonight, correct?
That's correct.
So, and our accounting procedures are such that every line item is very specific. However, within your departmental budget, there are various line items having to do with paying salaries.
That's correct.
So, I just want to make sure everybody understands. Certainly, this is a, can be an opportunity to discuss many things that might have led, that leads to this at times, but tonight, the agenda item is an accounting matter. Transferring money that is in the budget to pay salaries to another line item that is paying salaries, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
With no further discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody? Bishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes. Our motion passes. Public question and answer period. Anyone have a question for the council? Mr. Stancuna?
Good evening. My name is Darryl Stancuna, I live at Old Village Circle condominium association. I have a letter I sent to the mayor, sent to all you guys up there, no one responded again, this is second time. I confirmed, because I called the clerk, and she said yes, she got it, and I asked for her to respond back, and she did, just to let me know that they got it, for we didn't have to go through freedom of information, waste their time to go through this. But you guys gotta stop ignoring the public. I've been a taxpayer, I own a house, well condominium. I've been here 54 years, and you guys can't do that to the public. I wrote a letter, no response. The new mayor said he could work with everybody and anybody and whatnot, and his campaign had choked. It's not true, never got back to me. But anyway, the letter is, "I, Darryl Stancuna, am applying for the police commissioner. We do not have a civil review board in this town." Now, if anyone's offended by that, you shouldn't even be up there, because this is a matter that most towns and cities have. They have a civilian review board. It doesn't mean, okay, people aren't doing their job, which can happen in any department. It just puts in checks and balances that we don't have in this town. So what I'm trying to find out, no one got back to me. How do we start this, you know, do I just show up to the police department and say I'm the police commissioner? No one's gotten back to me on how to do this procedure. How do we even do a civilian review board for the police? And basically, you know, I want to do this personally, to monitor all shifts, write evaluations on every officer, do a file on each one, the supervisors, look into, make sure that information is being passed off to other shifts. I've been told by some officers, they weren't given information from following shifts. Information is not being passed, and it needs to be looked at by the civilian review board or a police commissioner, because nobody's checking to see what they're doing, everyone's just on this, okay, let them do what they want. And that's wrong, that is wrong. I'm a taxpayer, maybe you guys think that's okay, but I'm not okay about it. I want to volunteer into this position, I don't want money, I want to ride shotgun on all three shifts and do these evaluations, give it back to the public, and let the public know what's going on with the excessive forces. We're still under an investigation on that homicide from the police back in October sometime at that point. That, that never got cleared, the other towns and cities got cleared on that, that investigation is still pending. And there's other excessive forces that need to be looked into. I don't understand the secret on that. So if someone could kindly tell me, how do I run this, get this going, I'd appreciate it very much. No one got back to me, I emailed all of you. No one responded back to say, hey, how you doing, happy new year, nothing. We pay you guys up there, we pay the mayor. And that's very disrespectful, you don't do that to people. I've got the emails, nobody responded except when I called the clerk to ask for a response. And she said the mayor or someone will get back to me. Nobody got back to me. And that's not what you do, whether you like somebody, dislike somebody, you should not be in the business. Not at all, you can't be biased like that. But if someone could please get back to me, I know we got some business up here tonight, but I purposely came here tonight because no one got back to me. So if someone, or let me know how we do this procedure, I'd really appreciate it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Stancuna. You know, I did get your email, I did not respond to your email, and I apologize that I haven't responded. Frankly, I wasn't quite sure how to respond. I think your heart's in the right place, you're a former Lyman Hall Band parent, I think you're a great guy, I love that you stand up for your community. Some of the comments you made tonight, and some of the comments you made at the debate, would, would give me pause before I put you in a position like this. And I'm not sure if we have this authority, but, but just so you know where I'm coming from. And I will respond to your, to your email. Mr. Mayor, do you...
Mr. Chairman, I did receive the email late last week, I haven't responded to it yet. We currently have no positions in town that, that fit the request. We do not have a civilian review board, we do not have a civilian police commission.
I'd like to initiate that, and you shouldn't use a debate, because there are a lot of problems with the debate. This town hall is over the hill, I've never seen in my life in chaos. Don't even mention the debate to me, that was crazy that night.
Understood.
Mayor debate, so can't even, I didn't do anything at the debate.
No, no, I'm not saying you were disrespectful, because you weren't, I'm just, I'm just saying some of your views on policing and so on.
Well, I wish someone would get back to me on that, because that way I wouldn't waste the public's time tonight with these ridiculous conversations, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's wrong, don't do that, it's not good business.
It's a, it's a fair argument, thank you, sir.
But the other thing I'd like to add is that, over on South...
Mind if we, if anyone else has a comment, and then we'll get back to you?
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment, Mr. Garlic?
Mr. Garlic, Ave Bumbaco Drive. I just had a question on one of the line items for the Consent Agenda. It was the, I think, $370 transfer from Firewatch Services to the replacement pay account. Just, I know that the chiefs have left, and this is going to be a question that only they can probably answer. But the, the pay for Firewatch Services comes out of the overtime account. Why it's being replenished to the replacement pay account, and it's been done in the past, I went back and looked just to check to see if this was a continuing thing. I think the last Trail of Terror funds went from the, I think it goes in the general fund, into the replacement pay account again, and that's, that's not where the expenditures are coming from. So it was just a question I had, why the, it was kind of like a budget transfer between lines, kind of unofficially, I guess. But that could be answered later, I guess you'd have to reach out to the chiefs to figure that out.
Mr. Sun, do you have any feedback on that, or would you like me to have the chiefs get back to Mr. Garlic?
I would have the chiefs get back to him.
It's a pretty specific question, so, yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Michael?
Evening, Jason Michael, Meadow Street. Um, just a quick congratulations to the new mayor, all the returning counselors and new counselors, there's high hopes for the next two years. Congratulations to the chair and vice chair on your seats. With that said, I have a couple of small companies in town, and those companies, they, my duties are crisscrossing town on multiple times a day, sometimes. And I've noticed over the past few weeks, and I brought this up before multiple times with the last administration, I'll start on the other side of town, and that's at Pregman Park. The entire back half of the park is closed with concrete automobile barriers. You come across Community Pool has been locked, closed, inaccessible. You drive to the top of the hill, Harrison Park, Upper Harrison, automobile barriers, blocked. Drive out to East Center Street, Veterans Memorial, entire back half of the park is blocked, concrete barriers. There's where the trailheads are, fields. Keep moving out, we can go to Woodhouse, both soccer fields, blocked, concrete barriers. Pat Wall Field, chained off, no access. And then I drove out past Bertini Park, which is 70-something acres, locked gate, no access. I'm confused. I don't know why we're closing off public parks. I've asked the prior administration, I've asked the prior director of Public Works, I've asked the prior director of Parks and Rec, I've asked the current director of Parks and Rec, I've asked the current director of Public Works, and now I'm asking the current administration. We're spending tax dollars hauling these blocks out, and I don't understand why, and then we have to get rid of them. The average temperature from November 1st to December 31st was 40 degrees. Now that's for every 30-degree day, there's a 50-degree day. I don't, I don't get it. And I've heard it thrown around by the past administration that, that it refers to the Department of Public Works. And I've, and I've heard them say it's because of dumping. And last I checked, dumping isn't seasonal. I, I don't get why we're being denied access to these areas. Makes no sense. Pregman Park, half of the place is blocked off, the front lot is blocked by trees. Dump half your house there, nobody would know. So that doesn't fly. I, I, I don't know who has authority, if anybody. And whomever does, if they do, have they checked with any of you or the mayor? These blocks just get hauled out in November, December, and we're denied access. You now have to park up by East Center Street, walk a quarter of a mile of parking lot, that's not plowed, to get to the trailheads. I just want, I just want an answer. Who's, who's making the call and why? And then in the spring, our tax dollars will go out again to Public Works and their crews and dump trucks and, and backloaders, whatever it takes to, to move these blocks, and then the blocks stay there all summer. Does anybody here know why, or who is saying this is to be done and undone every single year? Can anyone find out?
I don't know why the blocks are there, um, but I'd be happy to look into it. Mayor, if you have a comment, I know you've only been on the job a short time, but.
Well, yeah, they, the blocks were obviously put there before I'm sitting here today.
Right.
Um, and I have been, uh, meeting with the departments. I've had a first round meeting with Park and Rec and I will have another meeting coming up with them and I do have a meeting on my calendar with Public Works. So I will see what I can find out for you, uh, about the history of those blocks.
I appreciate it. And, and secondly, um, I'm, I'm going to take a pretty big liberty, but not a big risk here and ask pretty please with sugar on top. Can we have the Wi-Fi password for this room?
Uh, so we've, the mayor and I have had discussions about this topic already. And so, uh, I think the goal would be to provide Wi-Fi, uh, if we, assuming that we can do it safely and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But it's, uh, it's being looked into.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? Uh, your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, my name is Larry Kellogg. I live at nineteen Stetson Street over in the Yalesville section. Uh, I'm here to talk about, uh, item seven on your agenda, which is the trails, the authorization for the Quinnipiac Trail. If I mispronounce that, I'm new to the town. Um, I walk that trail a lot. Actually live just up the road from Neals and there is no sidewalk in either direction except for a very short piece of that. So the trail is my only option unless I want to walk along and I, I call it one fifty, but I don't know the actual name, from Neals all the way to the underpass there. I've walked that many, many times. It's not safe. There are multiple senior houses along that road. That's not safe. So the trail as I'm walking is a lot of older people walk that, people my age, which I'll be sixty-nine this year. I don't understand why there's pushback on creating a footpath or a bridge when the condo association doesn't want you walking on their property or riding their bike across your property. There's a big sign there that says that. So in order for me to walk the trail, I've got to walk by Masonic Air, over the bridge, over fifteen, down to the trail and then turn around and come all the way back, which adds an extra two miles, which I don't mind. But I'm not the only one doing that. And I see a lot of people walking on the trail and stuff. I actually worked with Kathy to take care of the trail. So I, and I've worked with, uh, Public Works, where they allow me to drive my truck to, down there to cut the wood out of the way and blow the leaves and everything else. So I really would like an affirmative vote on item number seven to go, because again, the trail is well-used. It's not plowed, but it's well-used. When the weather, even when the weather isn't nice, there's a lot of people that walk their pets along that trail too. So that's all I really got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Uh, Mr. Stancuna?
Daryl Stancuna, Old Village Circle Condominium Association. I know what the brother's talking about. These kind of condominium associations are insane. It's, it's just totally crazy. I lived in one for twenty-four years. Um, the other thing I wanted to say was, can I just show up to the police station and just do these evaluations and just do my work and ride all three shifts and get names of officers and get in the cruiser and start doing evaluations?
So that would be up to the police chief, but I would be inclined to say that they would not allow you to show up into evaluations of officers. Would that be, would that be correct?
Okay. I don't know about that.
I, I would agree with both of your responses.
Okay. Okay. So you're saying it's, access is denied to the public to evaluate the police department?
To go into private areas of the police department? I would say yes.
You, you really need to have a conversation with the chief. He's the one to authorize, uh, any of the activity you're describing.
Okay. Can you please forward what I sent then to the chief or what, what do we do here?
Your letter requesting appointment to the commission?
Yes.
I can forward that to the chief.
Okay. And if you could have him get back to me or somebody, because I know I have the right. There's Connecticut statutes. I know I have the right to have a civilian review board in this town. So you could, I know you're saying it's denied, right? Is that what you're saying?
No, I didn't say it's denied. I, I said that I wouldn't necessarily support it, but, but that being said, I'm happy to look into whether it's, it's feasible or not.
Because there is Connecticut state statutes on this. So as long as you're saying it's denied, then I have to go through the legislatures and let them know up in Hartford.
Yeah, again, I didn't say it was denied. I said that, um, uh, I'd be happy to look into it, but I don't know if it's, I don't know if we have a, an obligation or if it's, you know, up to this council or whatever. Probably look into it.
There's a Accountability Act that was passed and Mr. Fishbein's on the council. He knows about it. So I, I'm just letting you know if someone could get back to me and if I have to, I could cite the Connecticut statutes.
I will get back to you indeed.
On the review board. And then the other thing is, I've mentioned it before, we have like no famous people coming to town. Try to bring a big name this summer. It's a new administration, you know? I go up all, I have to drive all the way to Enfield. They always annually have big time, excellent, uh, big name rock bands. Uh, so other, Hampton has their stuff. Uh, we don't. I mean, this little group you have playing nothing against them, but let's get some big names. That way we could, uh, have people come from out of town, help out the small businesses around here. And it's just great for everyone too. I'd like to make that into, uh, motion. And then the other thing, last but least, I've mentioned before, is over South Elm Street and Ward Street, everyone's blowing through the stop signs. So I've mentioned this before. I don't want to see something happen to somebody. We need a traffic light there. Um, anybody will tell you, you just stand there. I've done that many times, just to watch and monitor. And people just blow through and ready to smash in. And I'm sure if I could, well, I want to check out how many car accident investigations that have taken place over there and basically around the whole town anyway. Find out what's going on with the traffic division. We need a lot of correctiveness. I know you guys listed on the agenda here, we're the safest small town. That, that's, that doesn't go, that doesn't fly. That doesn't mean nothing. Okay? That just means it's going to attract more trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, public comment is closed. Onto item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, well, coming off of that, um, the agenda item is recognition of our police department in late of the December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three study naming Wallingford the fourth safest small city or town in America. Uh, so I'm sure a lot of, a lot of you saw this. Um, it was on several of the news stations. Um, it was circulating around social media a lot. Um, I got several calls and emails of them, sure. Um, some of the other counselors did, um, people were very happy about this. We were very happy to see that Wallingford was named, um, the fourth safest small city or town in America. Um, so this was a study done by, um, Money Geek and they said that they analyzed crime statistics by quantifying the cost of crime and ranking, ranking one thousand ten small cities and towns nationwide and in every state. Data on violent crimes such as murder, rape and aggravated assault are included, as well as property crimes such as burglaries and car theft. So again, Wallingford was the number four in America, uh, safest small city. And then another thing that kind of jumped off the page of this study is that, um, the average cost of crime in small cities was one thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars per capita and Wallingford came in at just fifty-five dollars. So not only were we named the, uh, number four safest town in America, but we also, um, came in with a, a pretty low price, um, for that. So some of the other towns that were, that were in the top, uh, ten had prices of, uh, two hundred and forty-five dollars, five hundred nine dollars, eighty-one dollars. Uh, one town was two thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars. Um, so we came in at fifty-five. So not only were we the safest, we were also one of the least expensive for that. Um, so basically I, I, uh, I talked to the police chief. I thought that it would be nice to publicly recognize this, um, publicly recognize their work. Um, this is obviously a huge, um, honor, honor for them and something that doesn't just happen on its own. Um, and, and we're certainly all, I'm sure grateful to them for, um, the safety that we enjoy every day and being able to just enjoy our town and, and have that feeling of safety. Um, I did talk to the police chief, asked him to, um, come tonight. Um, I later found out that there's actually going to be a, a more formal, I believe, a citation possibly, uh, by the mayor at a, a more formal event in the future. So they will be getting some more recognition for this. Um, so the chief wanted it to be kind of at a night where, where more of the police department could be there. So we will certainly be doing that. Um, but I did want to keep it on the agenda because I thought it was just important, um, for the council to, to recognize this. Um, you know, to me, the number one priority of, of government is, is public safety and without, without that, really nothing else we do really matters. So our, I think, you know, for me, our number one priority is to make sure that the public is safe. Um, and our, our police department is certainly doing a stellar job of that. Um, so we just, I just wanted to make note of this study, uh, let the police department know how we appreciate their work and, uh, that's why it's on the agenda. So thank you. Thank you to our police department. And like I said, they will be getting recognition, um, later on also by, from the town. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Uh, I spoke to, uh, Chief Ventura. He is indisposed this evening, but he did send a statement, uh, which I will now read. Uh, it is Chairman Marone, on behalf of the men and women of the Wallingford Police Department, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Wallingford Town Council and in particular Counselor Tatta for acknowledging the recent achievement of being named the safest small town in Connecticut and fourth safest in America per recent study conducted by Money Geek. Staff at the Wallingford Police Department are dedicated employees who share in a unified pursuit of providing efficient and effective service response to the members of the Wallingford community and beyond. If not for the commitment of everyone here, would such a distinguishment be achievable? The mission statement of this agency reads, "In partnership with the community, the mission of the Wallingford Police Department is to ensure the law, protect life and property, and address the specific needs of our citizens. I appreciate the recognition bestowed upon this agency and again, thank the Wallingford Town Council for this recognition. We will continue to strive to provide the highest level of service to our community and value the relationship we have with our community stakeholders and the concerted effort to make the town of Wallingford safe for all. Respectfully, Chief John Ventura." So, uh, thank you, Counsel Tatta, and thank you, um, uh, Chief Ventura. Any other comment on that item? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to number seven, um, can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for a Connecticut urban grant in the amount of six hundred ninety thousand dollars for Phase Three B for the construction of the Quinnipiac River Linear Trail located at a parcel of land, land on and adjacent to three eighty Main Street and that Mayor Cervone is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town and to perform all acts which he deems necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of said documents. Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Uh, hi, Ms. Kapshinsky. Uh, would you like to, uh, your name and, name for the record and, um, comments?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Allison Kapshinsky, town engineer. Um, I'm here tonight, as was just stated, uh, seeking approval for a resolution. Um, it would authorize Mayor Cervone to enter into agreements for a six hundred and ninety thousand dollar urban act grant. This grant will be used for the construction of, uh, Phase Three B, which includes a trail extension from the trailhead on Fireworks Island to the public sidewalks on Route one fifty Main Street in Yalesville. And then for kind of just a general project update, we have completed, uh, preliminary design and we will be holding a public information meeting right in room three fifteen, Town Hall, um, a week from tonight, so January thirtieth at seven PM. Um, we'll be presenting the project and getting feedback from any interested members of the public that want to attend. Um, and then following that, our consultant will continue with the design and permitting of the project.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion on this item? Uh, Mr. Leffler?
I just wanted to thank you and everybody else that was involved. I know this has been a couple of years in the works, uh, discussions and, um, for getting a grant for it, um, even though supposedly we never get grants for anything. But, so thank you, um, and I look forward to walking in the trail.
And I would, if I may, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the Quinnipiac River Linear Trail Advisory Committee, um, specifically co-chair, uh, State Representative Mary Maschinsky did a lot of work to get this grant. So I appreciate their support as well.
Mr. Fishbein?
Thank you. I, I want to thank my, my friend, Mary Maschinsky, uh, for pushing to get this grant for us. It's, uh, it's very important. You know, it was during the pandemic that we learned many things about, uh, things that we don't normally use. Um, when we were forced to be outdoors, um, my wife and I used the trail a lot and, um, you know, I, I always try and help out with the cleanup and I always enjoy that and building fences and stuff like that. Um, but you know, as a community, I can't tell you how many people I saw on the trail, like almost every day. There's a gentleman who, um, lived over on North Farms Road, Marty Moore, who some of you may know. Uh, Marty was elderly and, uh, came up on it, Marty on the, on the trail one day and, um, he had lost his voice, but he was out there, he was exercising, he was trying to get it done. And, um, you know, Marty passed a couple of months after I, I saw him that day. So, you know, it was great that, you know, the elderly people can use the trail and, you know, this whole dispute, so to speak, with the, the condo, you know? I know, I went out there, I met with people who live in the condo, I talked to them about the agreements and the, what you can do and what you can't do, and we talked about it up here and, you know, this is just a good thing to, to get that, that bridge out to Main Street. So I'm certainly sympathetic to the gentleman who spoke before about the sidewalks and access to that, because I've done the circular route, you know, and, and I know it is dangerous out there. So, you know, this is a good thing and I'm certainly in support. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any members of the public on the, on the trail? Uh, Mr. Morganstein? Mr. Morgan, if you could be so kind and just yield to Representative Maschinsky and I'll, you're up next.
Sure. Thanks for coming. My co-chair, Kathy Granucci, and I are here to ask your support for this motion.
I'm sorry, uh, Representative, just your name and address.
Representative Veronika Shinsky, one eighty-eight, South Cherry Street, Wallingford.
Thank you so much.
Um, this grant has been a couple of years in process and Town Engineer's been very helpful working with us to get this through. It will solve a problem at the, uh, link between Fireworks Island, the current terminus, and Route one fifty, Main Street, Yalesville. And as you know, there's been conflict between users on the private bridge, which car, Wallingford people can drive over it in their cars, but if they try to go on their bicycle or walk or even take a wheelchair, there's a, a conflict on the bridge. So after much discussion and Allison was in on this too, we tried to share the bridge and we were not successful. So we are building our own separate bridge just south of the private bridge and all the pedestrians and bicycles and wheelchair folks can all use the pedestrian bridge. The condo association can use the private bridge and Wallingford residents in a car can also use the private bridge. So everyone will now be accommodated and I appreciate my colleagues' comments and support. Great Fishbein's comments and support very much. We are very anxious to finally link Yalesville Center with Wallingford Center.
And, uh, this is going to provide another extraordinary service for the community. I can tell you all year long, but especially at Celebrate Wallingford, the community stops to see us, to tell us how much they love the trail, what it has added to their lives and having that access from Yalesville to take a walk anywhere but to go into town and then reverse it for everyone who just enjoys being out in nature, this is going to be a tremendous benefit and we thank you all so much for all the support that we've had all these years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Morganstein, I appreciate your patience. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry Morganstein. South Main Street, congratulations to a new council and to a new mayor. Welcome, and much luck in your service ahead. The thing that I wanted to say tonight is that there's going to be a meeting next week in 315. On the town site, there's just a memo as far as information. Is it possible to get more information up on the town website? You're asking for public input, but we really don't know the parameters of what we could give input in, so...
I could at least add, sorry, I could at least add a site plan. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think a lot of people are very interested, but more information would allow for us to have better input, you know, if there is anything. So, thank you. And thanks to Rep. Kapusinski, and thank you guys for hopefully approving this, which I think you should.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
If I may.
Please.
You know, I want to thank Mr. Kellogg for speaking. He's relatively new to town and has quickly discovered this valuable asset. I was encouraged to ride my bicycle down there by Jeff Borny on the Conservation Commission. And I rode my bicycle down there once because of the volume of people using it. It is a tremendously valuable asset to this town in its present existence, and the completion of this project or the extension of this project with this bridge is certainly going to add to the attractiveness of the trail and create a great asset for all people in town.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mr. More. Vice Chair?
Thank you. I just have one question. Is the grant anticipated to cover the entire cost of the bridge?
So we have a couple of grants, but this does close the funding gap for the latest construction estimate.
Great. Thank you so much. Of course. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. If nothing else on the council, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Allinson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tatta?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes, and the vote was unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Onto number eight. Consider and approve a job description for a Director of IT.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the job description for the Director of IT.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Allinson. Good evening, Mr. Hutt.
Yes, good evening. Jim Hutt, Town HR Director.
Rick Livingston, Assistant HR Director.
Good morning, Mr. Hutt. Do you have a comment you'd like to start with?
I'm here tonight to seek the council's approval for a new job description of Director of Information Technology. I did provide you with a copy of the draft. Job description, the salary range being proposed is $124,968, $1,000 to $159,899 per year. So I believe you all have the job description, so I'll take any questions if you have those.
Okay. Questions, starting with Councillor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I just want to note, the next item on the agenda is to do an assessment of what we need. So I'm trying to figure out, why would we be creating, it appears, a division of government? Because this is a supervisor, supervisor supervise people, right? And that's what participated here. If we're going to do an assessment, and the assessment's going to have recommendations, and as a result of us contracting with that group, that assessment says, you know, this is what you could do, and then the powers that be determine what we are going to do, and then the determination is made whether or not we need a division. So why are we doing this cart before the horse?
If I may?
Please, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yes, the plan is to get the assessment of the technology needs of the town and get a plan for all the work that has to be done going forward with the schedule and all of that. The Information Technology Director is going to be instrumental to both working with the contractor and then going forward, working on the implementation of the plan. I'm hoping that if the next item passes, that the assessment can begin within a week and will take six to eight weeks. My guesstimate is that it's going to take a month to fill this position if approved by the council. And so the timing will dovetail together. Really, the Director of Information Technology should be involved from the get-go, certainly to review the plan and to participate in the implementation of it. It'll give that person, the person who takes this position, put them in the best position to be managing all of the town's information technology.
I guess that, you know, my concern remains, you know, there are plenty of businesses out there that operate, that have multiple facilities, that are in some cases, you know, interstate, and they outsource things like this. So we are certainly not a business, and we don't sell a product. Like, I'll give you, you know, the entire judicial branch used to have their IT stuff done by, who's this guy, JP Edison? And, you know, he did everything, and then everything was outsourced, and, you know, they started with, with all that stuff together, the stuff that we're looking at. And I'm just concerned that we, you know, at some point, there's going to be a menu. You know, we've talked about email and that kind of stuff and voicemail, and, you know, that's like low-hanging fruit. The assessment is going to say what we could, what we have, I would think, you know, what we have, what we could have, what is the industry standard like for government entities? At some point, that'll come across the mayor's desk, may come up here, or, you know, this is what we want to do. And I would think at that point, then, once the government officials, the administration determines this is what is sufficient to operate government, then we would perhaps look at cost, right? You look at cost of infrastructure, you look at cost of human resource, and whether or not it makes more sense to outsource a lot of this. But if you do it this way, you've already perhaps hired somebody, because I'm hearing hiring somebody in a month. I guess the other concern is there's a cyber technology, if I recall correctly, of, yeah, cybersecurity aspect to this, which I think right now is being done by the police department. And I'm not, I don't know what the police department, if we've, we're going to take a job that's being done perhaps by a unionized individual now, and I don't know, these are just questions out there, right? And shift that to perhaps, I mean, this would be a, what bargaining unit would this individual fall under? We don't know.
That hasn't been determined yet.
Okay. So it's possible there will be no bargaining unit for this particular individual and division, which may create a problem if you're taking something that's being done by a collectively bargained individual now, and you're shifting it potentially to somebody who's uncollectively bargained. Why do we need to go there now? That's, so I know the position.
If I may? Thank you. So the assistance that's being provided by the Director of Information Technology at the police department, it's assistive. It is not part of that person's job duties or descriptions. And that person's not here a lot. The local area network manager at the electric division was providing a lot of the support. That person just retired, and I'm not sure what the electric division is going to do with respect to replacement of that person. They do have the deputy to the person who's just retired, who is actually more actively involved in assisting us with technology, but it is on, I'll use the word assistive. It's, they're helping us. It's not part of their job description. So I don't foresee an issue with collective bargaining for existing positions who are helping us. The fact of the matter is, and for those of us, you know, who have been sitting in this room for 14 years, we're all aware of technological deficiencies in Town Hall and a significant lack of efficiencies that result from those, the lack of technology. We have a variety of networks that are closed-looped in Town Hall, that there are separate computers that only have access to the extranet. There are computers that aren't connected to anything but an electric outlet. And there is such a patchwork of systems throughout Town Hall that the work that's going to be done to get several hundred employees connected and working digitally is going to require an in-house director to manage the variety of issues that are going to come up on a daily basis. I mean, I can tell you that in the two weeks that I've been in the mayor's office, that I've had three visits or four visits myself, just to get my own operations up and running. The person who remains in the electric division, I think, is running ragged. There is going to be plenty of work for this position. And it will be certainly instrumental to the development of our whole information technology network to get this person working while the assessment's being done, and then allow this person to implement that.
If I, do you anticipate, I don't know where the recommendation came from, but what I just heard about was, you know, infrastructure, problems that presently exist, connecting, creating. Once those connections are made, though, I would think it's sort of like a learning curve, that, you know, there's going to be, there's going to be a ramp up, there's going to, you know, there's going to be triaging, right? New computers, connectivity, all of that stuff. But I would think at some point, and that's perhaps a portion of the study, which I'm in favor of the study, okay, that that is going to decrease. And that's the concern. I mean, because you've got to meet need along with the volume, so that you're showing some sort of need for a whole division here. So, I mean, we're going in circles. I just think premature. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Testa?
I can't think of an issue that has not been at the forefront of every political discussion in this community for 20 years. Everybody talked about technology, and you can go in all different directions, right? We need to do this, we need to do that. And it's always been something at the top of everybody's list about what needs to be done. So for myself, a new administration has come in, and in a relatively short period of time, I've been encouraged to see that already a plan has been presented, has been prepared to go into this, you know, head-on without wasting any time responsibly. And we'll talk about the request for the bid waiver later. I think that's been handled properly as well, reasonable. And then there's also the idea that let's, we need, we need somebody, we've been talking about this for 20 years, we need somebody managing this in the community like every other organization, call it what you will. So here's two things relatively early in the new administration, in our term, two ideas to say, hey, let's get together and let's address this. And it seems reasonable. It's common sense. You might disagree a little bit, but common sense says, we need to look at everything. Let's get some people that really know what the hell they're talking about, excuse me, and look at everything. And then let's also hire somebody who's going to manage this for the community. That just makes sense to me. Yet, as that's presented to us, the first thing I hear is obstruction, objection, a discussion about everything that possibly could be wrong with this. And far be it from me to be like a chair leader for the administration, I'll fight with them as much as I need to when the time comes, but this seems reasonable. Yet here we are arguing about stuff that doesn't even make sense to me. Want to outsource this? Outsource what? You know, we're trying to already, you're on the council, they're the administration. They presented a very reasonable approach to, as the administration, to address this. And our job is to say, does it make sense financially? Does it seem to be what we need? And can we authorize expenditures? But day one, our first meeting, we're attempting, some of us, one of us, is attempting to jump in and tell the administration how to do it better. You're not the administration. And I just don't want to see us get into this new term right from the beginning with nonsense, which is what the objection to this is. All right. I got heated. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Testa. Mr. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few comments. A stakeholder or department head, as this is envisioned, is absolutely the right thing for an organization in town of the size of Wallingford. With a couple hundred million operating budget, we're taking a look at resources that may or may not exist from a technology standpoint within the town. This person who would be hired, although I would question a month, that's kind of a lofty goal, especially in today's climate, it's a journey. And that journey, a technology journey, you have to understand where we've been, effectively nowhere, and then where we are going by using the tools of contractors, vendors, subject matter experts in each of the individual areas, which may in fact be somebody from the police department, may be taking a resource and utilizing just a phone call or a check-in or a how-do-I-do X, Y, or Z with public, with the PUC, and going through a number of different opportunities to take a look at what a contractor, a consultant, provides. It's not gospel, it's not a, it's a framework. It's not a plan of going forward and we're going to do steps 1 through 517, and we're just going to focus on 3J today. This is somebody who understands the big picture for the town as the mayor sees fit. The questions that I have around this, specifically is the recruiting effort in order to get an individual like this, it's not the traditional post-the-job on a job board or even a local municipal website. You're using tools, you're using perhaps recruiters, you're using perhaps, you know, a number of different resources. And I'm wondering what makes the recruiting efforts for this person different to meet your, you know, the month-long goal? Because this is, especially in the industry, this is a three, four, five-month process if it's not handled using the best tools that are available.
So we would have to look at those resources, reach out to folks who are in the information technology field. We do have a very good one over at the Board of Ed, who I could reach out to for those places to recruit. She has actively recruited for employees over the years, so I would certainly reach out to her. And there's also the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, and we can see if there's any public sector information technology people available that can help us to recruit. We have a very capable network administrator in the police department who has been a great resource for us since he was hired. So we would certainly be focused on those people who know where to go for the talent that we're going to be looking for. So that would be the initial recruitment plan.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I have to agree with Councillor Testa. I think this is way outside of my area of expertise, talking about IT and all and these types of things. You know, I use technology every day, but like, I don't really know foundationally how it's put together, you know, and the whole thing. And obviously, Mr. Regan has that kind of experience. But, you know, we've been asking for sort of leadership or vision on this. The mayor sort of delineated a vision, and so if this is how he perceives moving forward with the technology, to sort of leapfrog us from where we were before to where we're going, then I'm inclined to support, you know, his vision, because I don't have a better vision on it. And so I think we could talk about, you know, could you outsource it? And you probably could. There's probably a lot of things you could do, right? But like, this is, he's in that seat, I'm in this seat, and this is the vision that he's laid out. And so I think in terms of the vision, this makes sense to me, the IT director and then, you know, the bid waiver to sort of give us a starting point. So any other comments on this item? Mr. Laffin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I serve in a role similar to this on the campus that I work on, and we use a third-party consultant in addition to what I do. And nothing here precludes us from doing that, especially at the recommendation of the survey or the analysis.
the survey, or the analysis. And, and I think what's important, as it is for, for my campus, is that somebody is on the other end of the phone really quickly that can handle things, direct things, and has, has an overall view that is accountable to the mayor, to the council, and to people in the administration. So I think it's, I think it's very important, and it may very well be come that this is a one, two, three, four department person, I don't know. But it doesn't preclude us from using outside resources as well. But especially at this transition period, especially, we need somebody embedded in the culture of where the town hall and government is coming from to migrate towards the future. Maybe five years from now, it's all outsourced, I don't know. But right now, this is 100% the way to go. My only other question was, in all my experience with working with all the third-party IT vendors and whatnot, is that a lot of people fall into IT, like I did, without a bachelor's degree in one of the listed categories. I wasn't sure if it was wise to add a phrase in or with commensurate experience or whatever like that. Just because a lot of IT people end up coming, they're all kind of second career people, they end up someplace in their job, they end up the IT person, and then they go for 20-something years and get a career, but they don't have a bachelor's degree in computer science, or information technology, or business. It could be anything. That's my only comment, I'm not even looking for feedback on necessarily. It's not a deal breaker for me, but I do think it's something that should be considered.
So to, um, just respond to your question, Counselor, for the minimum qualifications, if you look at the last line, it does say, "Or an equivalent combination of education, experience substituting on a year-for-year basis." So you wouldn't necessarily need to have a college degree.
As long as that doesn't preclude them, because I know from other people that have applied for jobs in, in this town government, that it gets very black-and-white specific.
Some positions do.
Yeah. So I just wanted to be sure that that was what that was, so, thank you.
That's correct. Counselor Fishman?
So, and that was one of the, well, before I get there, what is the intent with the electric division? And, because I didn't see that expressly dealt with in here. Is it intended that this division is going to oversee those areas too?
If I may. The, the electric division already has a substantial network that, that warrants the position it has. I believe that the technolog, technology use at the electric division is also going to grow commensurate with the towns opening up greater use of technology. So I think that position is gonna remain necessary at the electric division. I don't anticipate that this position will support the electric division unless there is some, um, some temporary assistive need.
Well, you know, far be it for me to, you know, if what's before us is to hire a supervisor of IT for the town, and the electric division, which is a division of the town, is going to have employees doing IT, why wouldn't the flow chart extend to those individuals being supervised by this individual? Wouldn't you want congruency instead of?
We really, on a daily basis, operate separately.
Maybe that's part of the problem.
Well, I'm not so sure it's inappropriate at all. What they do is very specific in, in terms of providing utility services. General government has its, its different purpose.
Yes, but communication, you know, a lot of this is communication, right? So I think we all agree that the communication on the general government side is significantly lacking. The electric division, through its doings, have been able to do certain things. And in fact, we've been borrowing their employees to do IT stuff for general government. So you would hope that if the electric division gets better with their IT stuff, we are working on general government side, that neither is insufficient, they have parity, they have equal, and perhaps, you know, it's like communications, you know, fire police and all that stuff. You should all be working together. So, if you're gonna create, if you're gonna hire somebody at, was it a hundred and, $160,000? Something like that? Um, yeah, that's the, the cap, 125 to 160,000 dollars. And the electric division, I, I don't know, you know, may come to us and say, we wanna do the same thing. It would beg the question, why not just extend it? But I leave that to whomever. The, the educational thing, why even list the, the degrees? Why is it relevant? Because I would think that that pushes people away from applying many times. I mean, I don't know that many can glean out of this, that all it's really necessary as far as a degree is one in business administration, not IT. Business administration, which isn't necessarily in anything having to do with IT, right? Because that's one of the ones listed. It says business or public administration. So that would be, you know, one with, with some, some guy who did a lot with computers and, you know, a lot, a lot of people in this industry are self-taught, just playing with things, and then, you know, they get hired, as, you know, Tom was talking about. So why even have that at all? Why not just go right to five years of progressive, irresponsible experience in information technology, including three years in management supervision position, or equivalent, so on and so forth?
I think the ideal is to have the degree. If, if you get a candidate who does well through the hiring process and doesn't necessarily have the requisite degree, and they can demonstrate through the hiring process that they're otherwise qualified, I think that's fine. But I think you need to have the degree as a metric, as a, you know, a basis or a standard.
And I just think that having the degrees in there, I mean, the first step in the door is getting somebody to apply. And I, I just think that looking at that paragraph for most people, they are going to glean from that that they need. I mean, they're not lawyers, you know, they're not interpreting the written word as we do. If we're saying it's really unnecessary, what we really care about is supervisory experience, which is important. Experience for a certain period of time in the IT area, I don't think it's relevant. I, I see a value to a degree. I, I don't disagree on that. But ultimately, you know, they were a supervisor, a member of years, that should be sufficient. So, I defer. Thank you.
Mrs. Elson?
Thank you. So, take this as a blessing or a curse for you, but I have an MBA and I wouldn't apply for the job with the, and I work in IT also, and I wouldn't apply with the degrees that are listed at the top. I would, um, I would urge you to put the degree or commensurate experience part that's on the bottom to the top. I do agree, though, that a degree is kind of a basis. I know that, I did my undergrad as an adult, and while I don't find it, I don't find it to be a, um, I don't find it to be the same for everybody. I know many people who don't have degrees who would probably do very well in this position. I do think that it does sometimes discourage people who may not be aptly qualified otherwise from applying for the role. But putting commensurate experience at the top may encourage those who are aptly qualified, maybe with an associate's or something of that matter, or of that, like, in that realm of degree experience, may encourage them. Because while I do understand that we can make, um, we can make some determinations about bachelor's degrees and things like that, having gone as an adult, I also do know sometimes the value of them is, um, it's all about what you put into it specifically. Um, I mean, I could tell you stories about people I just graduated with, as, with my MBA. So, um, it's, it's a great qualification, it's a great tool to help detract people who may not otherwise be qualified. But, um, I can tell you that, you know, this would, this would preclude, I think, some very qualified individuals who are not in the, those specific fields that are listed. Um, and again, I don't want this to be a, a beating. I would have approved it without it being mentioned. Tom kind of reminded me that it, it had come up in a conversation between us. So I just wanted to say, um, you know, count your blessings, because I'm not applying. But, um, I'm, I just, knowing my own personal experience with getting my degree as an adult and already having had 17 years of work experience, by the time I did get my degree, it may, it may exclude some otherwise qualified people. So, just, that's it. And thank you guys very much for your attention all this time.
Thank you.
Mr. Regan?
So, we're not using in the town, I mean, I guess this, this is a question, are we using an applicant tracking system in the town?
So we're in the process of implementing that right now. We have not ruled that out yet, but we do solicit applications from individuals who can apply. They can fax in their applications, we have an, an email account that they can send their resumes in their, the application to. So we're in the process of, we're still a few weeks away from rolling out NeoGov, but that's the online applicant tracking system that we've been.
So the luxury the town has is to actually go through the resumes, not screen for keywords, not take a look and say, this wasn't selected, therefore you're not qualified, and go through all that piece, all of those pieces that, that we have in the industry. I mean, we get hundreds of resumes a week, they're screened, and maybe we get three, but I still make my HR organization go through each one of them to see if there are more qualified candidates in there that perhaps have a poorly written resume, or people who are brilliant but don't necessarily have the, the, the skill sets in order to, you know, a, a great, somebody's a great writer. So that's the only additional add-on I would have. As far as a bachelor's, I mean, there's a thousand-plus industry certifications that you could have listed and said, pick any 20 and you would be qualified. There's, you know, a high school degree is not mentioned in here, it's assumed. I mean, there's a number of different things. If you're serious about your career, please apply, is the message I think we're building.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Chair. To Counselor Fishman's point, I mean, it does say that this is, this person's gonna direct and supervise the work of employees in the Department of Information Technology. Or do we, aside from this posted position, we have nobody else in a Department of Information Technology in the town, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, um, is it to be assumed then that the study that would, that we're gonna talk about after this, that that would help determine staffing levels and such? I mean, I did read through that, but I'm just...
So, yes, we'd be looking for that information from the study. The, the director does, is gonna be supervising the implementation of whatever program we use. And, um, you know, employees aren't necessarily working directly for the town. In, in the implementation of the technology plan, those could be contractors that the director is supervising. Um, you know, my observation through my work history is that the reliance on technology, once you start, does not regress. It grows. And as the reliance on technology grows, the systems that you need expand. My observation is, once you have a technology department, it does not stagnate or go away. It, it tends to grow. If I can make a comment about outsourcing, if I may, we currently outsource our telephone system in town. It seems to have some robust, robust technology that we don't use. So we have to rely on a contractor to do certain things. We've decided that the mayor's phone should have voicemail for a variety of reasons. We called the contractor to get trained on setting up the voicemail and using it. They were supposed to show up on Thursday. We still haven't seen them. So outsourcing has its benefits, there's a different level of accountability that goes along with it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, uh, real quick, um, you know, I don't have technology experience, but I do have supervisory experience. And I'll tell you that the amount of time, I, I don't supervise people now, thank God, but in the times that I did, I spent more time working with my people on technology than probably any other issue, right? Outside of, you know, HR and all the other things, because it's like, it's like a constant reminder. So I think outsourcing sounds good in my head, but the more I think about it, you're gonna have, you have, how many people work in town hall? Like a couple hundred? So, give or take. And so you're gonna have, you know, 100 or so, 200 people that are gonna have to now learn to use technology that they've never touched before, and you're gonna expect them to use like an 800 number, or some guy from, you know, who's like a contractor to help them. So I think certainly in the development, there's gonna be a lot of hand-holding, there's gonna be a lot of uncomfortable moments for people that haven't had to use this technology in the past. And so I think, um, I'll keep you in my prayers. Anyone else on this topic? Uh, anyone from the public? Your name and, uh, address to the record, please.
Kathleen Hunter, North Orchard Street. Hi, everybody. I'm not gonna start with the comments that I had in here, because there's two things I want to address that came up on the floor. First of all, the IT and communication for structure needs for the electrical division are completely different than for an office system, and the roles are not the same. So I would strongly disagree with combining those roles, except on a supervisory perspective. Second, I don't have a phone on my desk anymore. I use Microsoft Teams, and everything goes to voicemail. I can pick it up here, even if I'm outside the office, which is a blessing and a curse. So I think this issue of having an IT department and correcting for decades of lack of access to the town hall via digital infrastructure has wide bipartisan support. But I do think that we need to be very mindful of the paradigm shift that this represents for the town, and be cognizant of the implications beyond its advantages. I'm here to put on the record and hopefully inspire some additional thinking on the subject of information technology and privacy, as we are consciously making these decisions to implement new capabilities. It is essential that the new IT management be administrative, dispassionate, and non-partisan. The director of IT or HR, whatever title was used, I haven't read the job description, should be interviewed for the role. It should not be political. It should not even be a de facto appointment that looks like an interview process but isn't. Anyone put into a leadership or support role should understand that they are carrying the stewardship and the mantle for being a responsible steward for the data privacy for everyone in town. Every business and every private citizen, irrespective of any past friendships, history, political persuasions. And it needs to be remembered that they have access to all the town digital data. We also need to clean up our data hygiene, in my personal experience, because my water bill keeps going to the wrong location over the course of a year. So we definitely have some work to do just on the basic background of our data. We also need this person to be on top of the landscape of cybersecurity that continues to evolve, which includes phishing attacks to your phone at this point. And there needs to be a bipartisan steering committee for anything that goes forward. Even if we put one position in this, one person in this role, what we really need is to make sure that not one person is holding these keys. Because that person could potentially walk away, disrupt the flow of data, if we don't have the right person in the role. So someone in the town governance also needs to have understanding and access to the data, not just the town IT manager, where you call some guy and it's like, well, where did my data go? You know, you need to make sure that the town, that this is not outsourced out of the administration, because this is a municipality, so it's my data as well, and your business's data as well, that's gonna be covered under this. Also, I am of the opinion, and this is secondary to the primary concerns, that we do need a social media policy for town governance. Wallingford Public Access does a great job of communicating to us... Wallingford Public Access does a great job of communicating to us the things that are coming up, along with the website, but we really we have webpages that are not for the town that have the Wallingford name on them, and we have information that could be easily dispensed by the town if the town did have a municipal webpage, but we don't. So this should be an easy thing to resolve, and we should be able to get more information spread out, oh, my phone closed, to us as independent citizens through social media, because a lot of people communicate that way now. So just be mindful of this is a paradigm shift. We're all going through it together. I agree with the position, but I want to make sure that we are really thinking about what this means, because this is an enormous step for the whole town to go through at the same time. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Anyone else on this topic? Or bring it back to the council? Mr. Fishbein?
You know, that that raises a question. What is the the protection that's contemplated here to protect the information that this individual may have sole access to?
So that that is what we are hoping with the next step, to come away with recommendations from the assessment as to how to manage that going forward.
So and that's sort of my car before the horse sort of situation. So it's anticipated that somebody is going to be, based upon the timeline that I heard before, hired in the next, we'll say, sixty days. They, I guess it's anticipated that they're going to have access to something that's potentially important shortly thereafter. I would think that this study is going to take a little bit of time, and implementation of whatever recommendations. In fact, I don't recall seeing in the proposal in number nine, any portion of that, that the recommendations include recommendations as to how to protect information that this division may come into zazz. That's why I'm sort of like, I'm I'm sort of like back to where I was, not that I've changed at all. But I'm I'm concerned, you know, it's a it's a good point that if we're going to rely upon technology, we're going to shift all this stuff, which I'm in favor of, but then you're giving essentially one person the ability to shut down that. That's that's a concern. So, I mean, do we have any, I mean, we have nothing that I've seen.
I've had discussions with Mr. Ziplo, who wrote the proposal for the next item, and our discussion certainly involved cybersecurity and and security of information.
Okay, but that the way I read it in in that backup, and not to to go to number nine, because it hasn't been called yet, but that was from outside sources. Am I to understand that, I mean, when I when I think about cybersecurity, you know, this person is going to have potentially information to more than just what is on the internet or in that system, you know, potentially would have the ability to shut down the phone system in this building. It's not necessar, I don't know, that falls under cybersecurity. But I am concerned. I leave it to whoever's going to do this, but I think it's I think it's a good point.
So respectfully, though, Mr. Fishbein, we had an IT person here now that had access to most of these things and could have done these, you know, all kinds of nefarious actions prior to today. So the so the risk is real, but it's not really any different than it was prior to now. So I think it's something that needs to be managed as part of any, you know, sort of technology endeavor.
You're talking about?
I'm talking about cybersecurity and redundancy in the systems that one person doesn't have access, you know, to to nefarious acts.
Well, right now, we don't have this, I don't even know what we have. Okay, I'm just hearing that it is insufficient.
Understand.
And and we know we are going to something that is sufficient. So comparing the past, and you can't tell me that that relationship was a good one and that actions were done that are acceptable, because I'll debate that one. I mean, if you want to, I mean, I I defer.
I think we're in agreement on most of what you just said. Anyone else on this topic? Oh, Ms. Allenson. My apologies.
So as IT at a major corporation that probably many of the people in the room have ordered from personally, I actually have just enough power to be dangerous, right, in my systems. I have access to customer information and business information across both, you know, national businesses, international businesses, and individual customers, right? The problem is I don't have time or the want to ever access those things. Additionally, my company has, we follow GDPR, which is a European global data data privacy essentially act. And I am actually GDPR officer for my area, because I do find security very important. And because I have the access, I understand how powerful it can be, but also how you can be limited by it. So in my company, if I were to try to access customer information, first of all, I have no access to payment information. It is encrypted. Second of all, I have no access to multiple customer data points at one time. I mean, this is pretty basic technological, like, stoppage that my guess is, before we were to give somebody the keys to the system, we would put into place. I do actually appreciate Ms. Hunter's suggestions, because I do think in an area where or in a town where we've been pretty sparse on technological advancement for a period of time, these are things that we should be thinking about, right? But this is also why we have a very experienced liaison to the council. We also, this is the reason why we are trying to put into place this person who can probably, along with the department IT people, manage all of this information. You know, it's possible that this person works with those people, and those people have access, and they don't have access to the broad customer information. We don't know what that looks like right now, and it's a great cautionary tale. I definitely agree on all of those points. So but I do I do want to say that, you know, from my perspective, I don't think, I I think that there's always been a certain amount of information that has been available, and we just are putting a person in charge of all of these people who have that information available to them now as as part of this. And definitely a great, a great series of points. So definitely something to think about and maybe in interviews, you know, this can be discussed. But I personally feel comfortable that a person who has professional experience and can present themselves as the proper candidate for this position, they will understand that GDPR or some version of our legal data protection in the US is at the forefront of necessity.
Thank you. Mr. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Inherent with building any modern-day technology system are the access controls in which to protect that data from other people, from system administrators, from network administrators, et cetera. You very easily can deploy a two-key system when looking at any type of information. You know, for instance, payroll. Payroll is a separate segmented system that only has access to people who should have access to it with the processes and controls. It's not just systemic. It's time cards, as we've we've mentioned before, and it's other pieces of information, bank IDs, all of those different types of things. There is a certain level of cyber hygiene that is inherent in building out any modern-day system. It is important to have an individual who has those capabilities, and that is clearly identified in the job description. We also build systems based on insider threat detection and external threats. And sometimes that insider threat detection is more important as far as data leakage and data loss and data lifecycle protection, and there's a whole industry around it, and how the data is stored, how it is kept, how it is maintained and monitored. And if the mayor decides he wants to take a look up license plate number from the police department, I can tell you, he can't do it. Those protections are in place cross-departmental, et cetera. Perhaps that was a poor example. But there is an inherent level of security that that does exist in today's modern standard. As we go into item number nine, the proposal does talk about frameworks for it, about implementing, et cetera. As far as security and everything else, there are closets around the building with network devices hanging it all over the place. I can shut down the Wi-Fi if I just walk out one of these doors real quick. You know, those aren't the types of things that we need to build and and do things. This individual needs to understand the environment in which they work in. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the council? Madam Clerk, please call the world.
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Morone?
Yes. Motion passes. Can I get a motion on number nine?
Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, for item number nine, I think we'll divide this into two motions. So the first motion will be, I move we approve a bid waiver for the technology assessment and technology plan services. Second?
All right, discussion on the motion? Ms. D.
Good question, Mr. Testa.
Having a technological issue?
He lost the Wi-Fi.
One of the three IT people to my left can help him out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, just if you would just explain, obviously, whenever there's a bid waiver, I'm always just always curious as to why we're not going out to bid. So if you wouldn't mind just opining on that, please, thank you.
Certainly. Several weeks ago, Mr. Senna and I, Mr. Senna set up a meeting with Mr. Ziplo and I from CLA. Mr. Senna was familiar with him, both having worked with him some time ago, or his firm, rather. And CLA is currently our town's, the firm that performs the town-wide audit. Having met with Mr. Ziplo, he certainly gave us a good impression as to his experience. Having gone through similar processes with other towns, you know, he mentioned a town a few towns away with which I had some familiarity. He is prepared to assign a team to us as soon as we agree to this, if we agree to this, and get the ball rolling. We've also taken the opportunity to do some research about the proposed fee. I did contact a very good friend who recently retired from PricewaterCoopers, which is one of the big four firms who actually ran their technology division at various points in his career. And his thought that certainly if his firm had proposed to do this work, the fee quoted would be on the lower side of what they might quote for a town of this size, a town government of this size. And then purchasing also did some analysis, and this is within the range that purchasing came up with. So we do believe, we have confidence in the experience of the team that would work for us, and we believe that it's of assistance that they have familiarity with our town, having done our audit for well over a decade.
Thank you, yes. And I I know, you know, with the audit, for for anybody who hasn't looked at it before, a large part of the, you know, audit does have, they really look in-depth at the structure of town government. So I understand having a company that's already familiar with that would be beneficial. And I'm glad to hear we kind of, without going out to bid, seems.
Can I interrupt for one second? Sorry. The people doing this study, it's a completely separate division of CLA. None of the people that do our audit will have anything to do with this project.
Okay. But the but the company is familiar with?
The company is familiar with, you know, the employees. I actually worked for that firm for two years before I came here through mergers. Jeff Ziplo is, when I go to do training and stuff, you know, I do quarterly trainings, he speaks all the time. He's he's a cybersecurity expert. I mean, this is his wheelhouse. And they do this for a lot of towns, which is why we kind of went that direction.
Okay, so the so what would be the drawback of or or how would this hinder our progress if we were to go out to bid as opposed to implementing the bid waiver?
So we're dealing with professional services here, too, so sometimes getting the lowest is not what you're aiming for. So we could go out to bid. I don't know how many bids we're going to get. We're going to be in that range, but we're talking maybe six to eight weeks. And we kind of wanted to get this going. We didn't want to wait that long.
Additionally, we'd have to hire a consultant to write the bid specs, which adds to the the length of time it'll take to get moving.
An additional cost for the consultant as well, I assume?
Yeah, nothing's free.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Fishbein?
we have a procedure that I think is codified in our ordinances. I think the reason for that is to try and make sure that taxpayer dollars are not funneled to favored individuals, I guess, you know, just to have an open process. I think what I what I what's before us is somebody cold-called the town, because there was no bid out there. No, was?
There was no cold call to the town.
Okay, so there was a solicitation?
Mr. Senna called him.
Okay, so Mr. Senna, without direction from us, reached out to a potential vendor that he has a prior relationship with. Is that that's fair?
Prior and existing.
And inquired about services for the town, and now that small universe is before us for approval. Is that, I mean, that's what's before us. So I'm, you know, I'm into, I think an assessment has to get done. I just, you know, what does this say to other people? What does it say to the the process all told? You know, I hear on one hand that this entity has familiarization with the town, but none of these individuals. So that sort of negates itself, right, except for Mr. Ziplo. I mean, I'm in I'm in favor of the the assessment. I would, I would frankly be more infavorable of somebody who didn't have any relationship with the town, because I would think that there, you know, this is an important thing, which we talked about, you know, not only tonight, but for a long about, you know, not only tonight, but for a long time. I don't know why, I would want somebody who came in that knew nothing about this particular town and said, hey, that doesn't make sense, or, you know, so on and so forth. Their familiarization...
If I may, I'm not concerned that somebody's going to come in, look at our technology and say, hey, that makes sense.
Okay. Well, I'm hearing on one hand that, you know, people have access to stuff and don't be concerned, and that I don't think any of the technology that we presently have is going to be here in another two years, hopefully, if this process happens. But, you know, we've run into this before where department heads are calling, you know, inquiring, and then somehow it ends up here. So, I mean, the process is there for a reason. How much longer would it take to follow the actual process?
We'd have to get somebody to write bid specs, and then we'd have to go out to bid. It could be three months.
Okay. Is it possible to take this document and just attach this to a, give us your...
That's their intellectual property.
It's in the public sphere at this point.
Well, beyond the administrative, it hasn't been published yet. But it's their intellectual property. We can't just, just by virtue of the fact that it's been published for our use, we can't turn around and use it to create bid specs. I mean...
I disagree, but...
Well, you can give people legal advice about that. That's fine.
That's... I mean, the fact of the matter is, we do have a process. So, you know, the facts are the facts. We are where we are. I defer.
Mr. Laffin?
Thank you. So, the ordinances do set up a process. This is the process. It allows for this type of thing. In actuality, I would recommend an RFP for a technological-related thing, not a bid waiver, and that probably would take longer and be more complicated. We want to get this moving. Our process allows for the administration, for the mayor, and his department heads to come up with a proposal, and for nine people involved in a legal checks and balance system to look it over with him and agree whether it's the right path or not. It looks like eight of us understand that this is an appropriate and the necessary way to go to keep things moving. And I think that we need to just keep moving. I think we have an organization that is reputable and would not be interested in disservicing the town because the larger parent organization has an active relationship. I think this is the way to go, and I can't believe that this is taking so long. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Testa?
Thank you. I would pretty much mirror what Counselor Laffin had said. Yes, we do have a process codified, modified for purchasing, but we also have a very specific way of considering and approving bid waivers, also codified in our ordinances, for precisely this reason. So, it's not, it's a little disconcerting to present what's happening in any way that implies something underhanded. And that's what's, that's what's underneath the comments being made. You know, it's to imply that, oh, somebody knows somebody. No. The reason you have a purchasing ordinance is to have open, transparent bidding. And normally, you put bids out and you go with the low bid. Ironically, what's everybody been screaming about for the last three months? The field of shame. And everybody criticized, oh, you went with the low bidder. Oh, you went with the low bidder. And that's another story. But it is, as I said earlier, sometimes common sense allows you to work with the administration. The administration comes to us and presents an idea in public, transparently, and explains why they would like to bypass the traditional bidding process because there are advantages to this process. There are advantages to this path. It's right out in the open. So, there's really no reason to suspect or imply, that's what gets under my skin, to imply that there's some kind of impropriety at play. So, the last menu item, we have to worry about a North Korean spy coming in and taking all of our information as opposed to outsourcing. And now, we're questioning the integrity of the gentleman who presented this to the administration, who went out and used his experience and his contacts and his expertise, and went to the mayor and said, hey, I know somebody who is also part of an organization that we are contracted with, and they can do this for us, and here's, here are the advantages. And what do you think? So, we're all thinking, now we're all considering the same thing, above board, transparently, in our purchasing ordinances. Our rules allow us to do this. We're not bypassing good practice. We are actually following good practice by considering a bid waiver responsibly, transparently, and openly. So, if you don't want to do it, say so. If you feel that bid waivers are inherently evil, say so. But don't impugn the integrity of the people that are presenting that to us in order to make some kind of point. It's just not necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, the, um... We've been looking for, sort of what I said before. I agree with Counselor Testa. We've been looking for this sort of type of, like, leadership for so long. So, now it comes. The amount of money we're talking about is kind of a small amount of money, and we're bidding professional services, which is not, which is something where, you know, if you're choosing a doctor, you choose a doctor. You don't, like, put it out to bid and say, who can give me the best, like, gallbladder surgery? So, I think that this seems like the perfect situation for this kind of a bid waiver. Mr. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to understand, there are budget implications for next year with delaying this any further. If we're looking at a process that takes six to eight weeks for an RFP at significant cost to be developed, be issued, to be evaluated, and another eight weeks to perform the study, you're now four months from today, let's say, next Monday as a start date, which gives us basically a shot in the dark as far as what next year's numbers from a technology standpoint should be. I think because we're in, you know, we're past budget season almost at that point. So, the implications of waiting on this, clearly to me, for such a small dollar amount, is budget implications for next year, which this is an insignificant portion of it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. D?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Counselor Regan's point, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to ask you, is time of the essence with this, in your opinion?
I could not have said it better than Mr. Regan did. The, you know, I have to propose a budget to you by April 1, and having as much of this under consideration as possible is going to be helpful. You know, I know in the next item, I'm asking for ARPA money, and I know that's a tough discussion for a lot of us. But I am going to try to look for sources of funding to get started. This is not something that's going to happen, you know, once we start the process of implementing the plan. It's not going to happen in days or weeks. It's going to take months. So, it is certainly going to carry into the next fiscal year, but there are certainly parts of it that I would like to start well before the next fiscal year. So, I will be looking for creative sources of funding for this. I've discussed with our grants coordinator, use of, possibly use of low SIP funds for the technological infrastructure improvements. It is something that's acceptable for ARPA. I know I'm getting ahead of myself, but I will be sending a memo to the council that in the next, hopefully, within the next two meetings, we'll have some discussions about what to do with the remaining ARPA funds. We do have to have them committed by December 31st this year, and I'm going to be inviting your participation in that process. So, yes, getting started, going back to the original question, getting started on this as soon as possible, in light of the timing, in light of the fact that I have to present a budget to you by April 1, is incredibly timely. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I'm, you know, I don't completely disagree with Counselor Fishbein's concerns. Bid waivers kind of always make me a little nervous. I like the process of a bid waiver for government. I think that's how we get the, you know, the best pricing, the, we can pick which service is the best, even if it's not the lowest bidder. So, I'm always, always leery of bid waivers. I think on this one, I'm leaning towards, towards being in support of it due to the timeliness. Obviously, it's a reputable company. The price it's quoted, I have no experience with this, but it doesn't seem, it seems fair to me. It sounds like the administration has, you know, informally shopped around, so I'm trusting that that's, that price is fair. It seems like it is for what we're getting. So, I am leaning on the side of supporting this, but I did just want to say, I, you know, bid waivers as a whole are, I'm usually leery of, so I'm certainly not taking it lightly. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein?
Yeah, I mean, the fact is that we've never used this entity for, in my knowledge, for something like this. In fact, can somebody just, and maybe I missed it somewhere, in the backup, which is, it was like 17 pages long, can you tell me one town that they've done this for that's listed in the backup?
I don't remember that they listed towns in the backup.
I mean... I think there's a reason why the ordinance does not say that this is the process. I understand that we have a relationship with this entity for different services, utilizing different people. The backup doesn't, the only portion that I could find that in any way, shape, or form has anything to do with acumen with municipalities is on their cover letter. It says, "We fully recognize the critical nature of this task." I'm sorry, it's the next, it's the next paragraph, the third paragraph on the first. "CLA is confident that our extensive experience serving similar municipalities..." It doesn't say serving similar municipalities in this area of service. We understand that CLA does auditing, that's servicing similar municipalities. But as far as I can tell from the backup, they've never done another municipality as far as this work. So, that's part of the problem here. And, you know, bid waivers are usually used for if we have an ongoing relationship for the same service. So, like, the police department came to us about Motorola, that, you know, Motorola, we have their infrastructure, we have their stuff, so in order to, you know, so we don't spend $3 million changing, you know, reinventing the wheel, we want to continue with that. We're going to get their software so it's, you know, it keeps on going. You know, that's, I think, a legit, and I don't mean to denigrate what's before us, but I can understand that sort of bid waiver. This is something totally different. This says, we're not going, we're not going to go out to the general public. I agree, RFP would be the way to go because you don't want to be low bid, you want experience to do that. We're going to, we're going to select a group that has possibly never done this work before, and we're going to use taxpayer dollars, and whatever the result is, so be it. I, I'm still, I mean, has anybody found that information in the backup?
So, one of the information, page 11 does say they serve 4,200 municipal clients. So, they have a division that handles this. I would presume that they have some experience in this regard.
Well, they serve municipal clients for auditing. They've been doing auditing for years. I understand that. So, I just, you know, this is sort of their, their pitch to us, right? It was to, it's addressed to Tim, you know, this is why you should use us. I know if I was putting a pitch together, I would be saying, you know, I've done this work before for these towns, you know, and something about that work. So, it's not here. But I defer.
Mr. Regan?
So, where it is, is on the website. CLA's division that presented this to us is CLA Connect, CLA to connect.com. Reading specifically from slash industries slash state and local government, talks about how they handle charter schools, counties and municipalities, housing authorities, school districts, state and government agencies, tribal governments, and gaming, and a wealth of information regarding what this entity actually does that I would argue, and as one who does these types of proposals at a federal level, there's too much information to include. And if I killed you with 100 extra pages, I guarantee you wouldn't read them. But to do the due diligence and take a look at from their first page, yes, this is in their wheelhouse. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
I, too, was just going to point out the website, but I did have a question. It says eight to 10 weeks turnaround once they're given, sort of, once they initiate. Do we have an idea of, like, how, you know, providing this goes through and the money goes through, how long that initiation might take?
I'm told they could start in one to two weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else on this topic? Anyone from the public care to comment on this topic? All right, I'll bring it back to the council. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Morone?
Yes. And motion passes. I'll take a motion on 9B, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ARPA funding for the bid waiver for Technology Assessment and Technology Plan Services. Second.
Second.
And, Mr. Chairman, while I have the floor, I'm wondering if we should be adding the amount that is in our backup to this. Yes. Okay.
So... You can include the amount now.
Okay. Sorry. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll amend that motion to read, "I move to approve ARPA funding for the bid waiver for the Technology Assessment and Technology Plan Services in the amount of $39,000." Second.
So, moved. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. D?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, I know, you know, we've been listening to me, I guess I'll use the word complain about ARPA for a few years now. I'm actually thrilled that this is, this is something that we're spending it on. This is, you know, something that the taxpayers and the residents of this town have clearly stated that they want. They want more technology. They want to be able to do things online more and have more accessibility technologically. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm thrilled that this is something that we're not spending taxpayer dollars on, but we're spending ARPA dollars on. And it certainly goes along with the spirit of ARPA in that, you know, more technology is certainly something that we realized during the pandemic, we maybe had some shortfalls. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I attach myself to those comments. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was similarly, I think what we all experienced during the pandemic and the purpose of the ARPA funds, as they were, you know, given out to towns to spend, was to specifically address the shortfalls that we all experienced as a result of the pandemic. And I know firsthand that people within this building were not able to work remotely. A lot of business had to continue in person when it could have been handled with technology that we just simply didn't have. And so, using money to, that money for these specific purposes, I'm very much in favor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Morone?
Yes. Motion is unanimous. Thank you. Onto item 10. We have a fan. That's nice to see. Onto item 10. Onto item 10. We have a fan, that's nice to see. Onto item 10. Discussion on possible action regarding ordinary unusual town services being provided to property owners at Hidden Brook Lane. Counselor Fishbein, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I'm going to just read my backup for those that don't know about this situation. My understanding is that the developer was approved to subdivide a large parcel, install an access roadway known as Hidden Brook Lane, and improve lots along the road. Those approvals included the requirement that easements be overturned years ago. Now, all the lots have been developed and sold to innocent purchasers, and yet the developer has not executed the easements. Given the lack of compliance, the town has refused to recognize Hidden Brook Lane as a town road, even though the town did issue a street sign. As a result of the lack of recognition, the town does not plow the road, and the residents who pay taxes just like anyone else in town are imperiled each time it snows, not knowing if and when their street will be cleared. By statute, the developer technically has, I believe, I believe it's 15 years now, to complete the project, or the approval expires and needs to be resought. Here, though, the developer has gotten the benefit of the improvements, so the possible expiration of an approval is annulity, as expiration would mean nothing to the developer, who has already sold all the parcels. I think the town council should do something to try and assist these innocent taxpayers, so on and so forth. So that's what brings us here today. Now, I did get backup, additional backup correspondences involving this. My understanding is that this project was approved originally May 9 of 2016. At that time, they had five years to complete that approval under the old law, chain expired on 5/9/21. As we sit here today, there's a lot of stuff that's not done by the developer, which continues to, the road is not being plowed, it's falling upon the developer, these people have uncertainty. And my understanding is that the street light and/or streetlights in this area are not lit. So, I mean, I think it's a safety concern, you know, ice, people trying to drive out of there and, you know, because it's on Route 68, you know, slide right out into 68 and that kind of stuff. And I guess I'm asking the law department what we possibly could do here.
Well, the developer, actually, it's 14 years is what he has to complete the project. So, at this point in time, I have managed to get his attention and, more importantly, an attorney representing him. Supposedly, we're looking to finalize all the documents that need to be finalized. That includes multiple easements, final correct as-built, and a few repairs, or something about the fire hydrant, and there's a few other things. So, at this point in time, I mean, he has indicated that he has done plowing. I don't know, the residents reported that they haven't or not, I haven't heard that, but, so, because I did actually remind him that that was his legal obligation. So, you know, the process for accepting a road is sign off by the town engineer, and then it comes before the council for acceptance. That doesn't change. I mean, it's very unfortunate that the law is written in such a way that somebody could actually take 14 years to complete something like this. I mean, I think it's ridiculous. I didn't write it. So, I mean, that's kind of where we're at now. I mean, I can't make any promises, because I've had these conversations before. I do think the fact that I have an attorney involved is of some benefit, that some of you that I can bother on a regular basis. But that's kind of where we're at at this point in time.
So specifically, the sightline easement aspect of this, because I ran into this on Wiffle Tree, and we almost bought the house on the corner of Wiffle Tree. And I don't believe the sightline easements were recorded, but they were reflected on the map.
Correct.
And when, you know, when we bought our house, it took us like three years, because I'm very particular, I looked at all the maps, and I saw that they had arborvitae on that corner. There was no way that a purchaser would know that they would not be able to maintain those arborvitae. And just so happens, I was there yesterday, I drove by us today, and somebody must have brought it to their attention, because they cut the arborvitae, you can now see, you know. Don't we have that issue here?
It appears that way, although it's going to be checked. We did inform the developer of that, and we indicated that the engineers should check to see if they are inside or outside of the sightline easement that we're supposed to have.
So the concern that I have is that's these people on either side, I believe is where the sightline easement is, have acquired those properties without the encumbrance of an easement.
Well, did you look at their deeds? Is that what the deeds indicate?
Well, the sightline easements haven't been recorded, no title search would show them.
Okay, but it would show, it could show in the description and the reference to the map that has the easements on it. I haven't looked at everybody's deeds, so I basically just told the developer and the lawyer, they have to solve it. That's how I left it with them.
Okay, well, I'm just-
I mean, if it's an issue, then he's going to have to address it, and his lawyer understood that from my last conversation with him.
Okay, I'm just, you know, for them to now record an easement, but these people already own this property-
We will be checking to see that they've done it legally, properly. So, I mean, that's, if that's something that they have to deal with, they're going to have to do that. And as to what the ultimate resolution is, I mean, we're going to have to figure that out. But it's his obligation to fix that, if that's, in fact, a legal issue.
Because certainly, a property with an easement is worth less than a property with, without an easement. So I'm just concerned that they paid a price without knowledge of the easement in-
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd have to find out what the facts are.
Yeah, agreed.
What the deed says, and legally, what, how does that relate with the maps?
Okay, so, what, and I don't necessarily want to tread on your meeting schedule, but do you think it's appropriate if we, like, put this on an agenda for February, and it could be a report of some sort?
Yeah, I think so. I, you know, I indicated that I want to hear back from certain, I want, excuse me, my office is really dry. I want to hear back this week regarding the status of the corrected as-bilts. So, and if there's not a direct communication between their engineer and the town engineer, then I'll be contacting the lawyer. So I don't have a problem with it being in February for an update, that's fine.
And then one of the things on the list appears to be a stop sign also.
I had the police department put the stop sign on.
Okay, I just didn't-
So basically, what happened is, because there was no stop sign or street sign, I contacted the police chief, and I discussed with him the fact that that's a public safety issue. He agreed. They did go out and put those items on there, and we've billed the developer for that.
Okay, and have we been compensated for that?
No, actually, I checked, I thought he had paid it. He did not, and I informed him today he needs to get the check over there. It's about $300.
Okay. I mean, I think I've brought the issue to the attention of the body, and I'll defer to the chair. I know that some of the residents-
Yeah, and I will say, you know, I did consult with some other land use lawyers, because I said, you know, am I missing something here? And I was actually surprised to hear that others have actually had this same issue. So, you know, you and I have talked about what needs to be changed in the law. I mean, 14 years is most ridiculous amount of time, particularly for a smaller subdivision. And certainly, at the point where the last house is being sold, the law should basically provide that you can force the wrapping up of a subdivision. This is, it's really kind of ridiculous.
Yeah, it's one of the benefits of, you know, being municipal as well as state. You know, when that law passed, which I think was 2022, it-
Yeah, you had the executive order which extended it initially during COVID. That's how we, that was how the five years first got extended. And then they codified, I do think it was 2022, and so the subdivision of this size has 14 years.
So it was sold to us as like a pro-business, pro-develop-
I'm sure, I'm sure it was.
But, you know, the, you know, because ordinarily, your permission to subdivide and build would expire at five years, and the argument was, well, you know, because of the market, we don't have people buying lots, so we don't have the money to put into the success of lots, so we can't get it done.
Well, even when it was five years, you could get an extension, and if I remember the law correctly, you really couldn't say no to an extension at that time. So you really did have more than five years. But in most cases, the developer is usually yelling at you to accept the road, because they want to be done and gone. In all our years, this is the first time we've had the opposite issue. And so, you know, we, we're working to get to the end of this, for everyone's sake.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Smiley, I know we've talked about this over the past few years. I assume there's still a bond, and we, the town can't pull a bond until the 14 years or-
Well, the issue with the bond is that it doesn't get us the easement. We can't, I can't call the bond and issue an easement from him to us. So we can't get those final things, items, done. And those really are those in the corrected as-built, which is, you know, the developer's responsibility. They know what they actually did, and it's up for their engineer to certify to us what was actually constructed. We can't do that for them. So that's the problem at this point in time with that. It doesn't really get us to the finish line.
But we do still hold the bond.
We do still hold the bond, he's fully aware of that. He's mentioned it in our conversations, so.
Are you able to say how much it is on the record?
There's a $39,000 cash bond and a surety for erosion controls and stuff like that. I forgot how much that is.
So it would behoove them to complete this, to get their bond?
To get his money back, that is correct. One would think that that would be done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Members of the council, members of the public, sir? Kindle your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening. Nick Felko, 5 Hidden Brook Lane. So first of all, I just want to get on the record some recognition. Kevin Pagini, the town planner, he's been very communicative over the last few years with this issue, very much appreciated. When I sent a letter to the town council and the mayor's office back in 2021, Counselor Tata reached out, and we've been in communication ever since, so very much appreciated for that, too. And when we kind of talked about this being maybe a state law issue, she gave a nice warm handoff to Counselor Fishbein, who, this is why we're standing here tonight. So thank you all for the work you did up here. Just sitting back here now, listening to the conversation before I came up here, it actually brought me a little bit of joy to see the frustration you all have that we've been living with for the last five years of just this guy, our developers. One of a kind, not for the good reasons. But, yeah, I mean, like Counselor Fishbein said, we've been here since 2018. The first lot was conveyed in March of that year, the last lot in December. It's only seven lots, it's a very small street off of 68 going towards Cheshire, up the hill by Sheehan, I'm sure somebody was driven by there. And ever since we've moved in, we've had issues. The road didn't have the final grade until 2021. We didn't have the stop sign or street sign, like Ms. Janice said, or Ms. Smalley, excuse me, said, until 2022. I guess I want to say it out here. And, yeah, the developer, you said you met with him, his attorney, and as you said, we've gone down this path how many times now with meetings and certified letters and everything else, and just nothing, some things get done. He plants the trees, the final grade, the final grade of the road got done back in 2022. Snow plowing is definitely, for me, the biggest issue. My wife and I, we both work for the BA, we're pharmacists. My wife works at the hospital, West Haven, you know, hospitals don't close, she has to go get all the house, you know, 24/7 pharmacy. And we don't know when the street's going to get plowed. Sometimes it does automatically, the contractor comes and plows the road. Thankfully, these last two snowplows we've had this year, it's been good. Before that, I'll give him a few hours, I'll, you know, I'll text by, you know, 8:00 AM, 9:00 AM, one's plow coming, because he doesn't pick up his phone, he doesn't have voicemail set up. And sometimes he texts back, sometimes he doesn't, sometimes the plow just comes, sometimes he responds, "I have done it all. Call the town, tell them to release my bond and put this behind us." And that was from last year. So, he clearly thinks he's done everything, but he hasn't. Yeah, so all that to say, you know, it's just a very frustrating situation, the whole COVID law changing, you know, I guess it's just bad luck on our part. It was approved in 2016, the law got codified, you know, just after that five-year deadline. I think we have to wait until 2030 at this point. It's kind of ridiculous that, you know, we have to opt the Texas guy for the next six years to get my street plowed. You know, we pay a lot of taxes, my tax bill's almost $12,000, you know, our whole street probably pays 70 grand a year. It's a decent tax base for, you know, a small street. So we're just looking to get some town services like anyone else at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felko. Sir?
Anthony Rosati, 7 Hidden Brook Lane, actually right next to Nick, who's been tremendous helping us out on the road, another gentleman in the back, he lives on the same street. We've been dealing with this since 2018. I know this man personally, my brother-in-law was very good friends with him, does business with the family. He doesn't care about the bond. I've heard him say it. He doesn't have a shred of integrity in his body. And to echo what he was saying before, the stop sign, the plowing, we never know if we're going to get plowed. You know, we all work very far away, we can't just call out. So that's an issue. We didn't have our streetlights turned on until 2021. So, dark street, my car actually got stolen out of my driveway in 20, late 2020. But that kind of brought up the, we can't even have streetlights, we can't get our street plowed. This gentleman does not care. I know him personally, he said to my face, "Whatever, the bond's not that much." He doesn't care. I know everybody here, I've heard from Nick directly, like I said, he's been spearheading this whole thing. Everybody's been very helpful who he has spoken to, specifically the town planner, did mention. We're kind of at the point where, when's this going to end? We heard about the 14-year extension, which blows my mind. I thought that was, I misheard it the first time it was mentioned. But I just wanted to say, I know this man personally, he doesn't care. Zero integrity, and my tax bill's about the same as Nick's. It's crazy that we had to wait three years for streetlights, how many years for a stop sign? You know, we all, Nick and I both have young kids, we got to worry about a stop sign, again, plowing, et cetera. The mailman gets stuck in the snow at 2:00 PM. It's crazy, because we can't get him to answer our texts. Like you said, he's got no voicemail. He's already moved on to three developments that I know of in other towns, because Wallingford won't deal with them anymore? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Rosati. Anyone else? Back to the council, any comment? All right. Yeah, so we'll put this on the February agenda again for an update. So thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. Onto item 11.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, I think we can combine item 11 with the addendum, which is item 16. So I will make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute's Section 1-225F and Section 1-206B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the following pending tax appeal matters. 14 Research Parkway LLC versus Town of Wallingford, VLG Wallingford Partners versus Town of Wallingford, and Constitution Real Estate LLC versus Town of Wallingford, and also the same executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute's Section 1-225F and Section 1-206B to discuss the pending matter of Town of Wallingford versus Butler.
Second.
Our motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We are now in executive session. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. We are now in executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the settlement in the pending tax appeal matter of 14 Research Parkway LLC versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? We're now in regular session. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the settlement in the pending tax appeal matter of VLG Wallingford Partners versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
All in favor? I'm sorry, signed by Counselor Fishbein. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the settlement in the pending tax appeal matter of VLG Wallingford Partners versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
All in favor? I'm sorry, signed by Counselor Fishbein. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the settlement in the pending tax appeal matter of Constitution Real Estate LLC versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
And, Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the Law Department to act on the pending matter of Town of Wallingford versus Butler as discussed in executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries? All right, on to number 15. So, as our first meeting, I want to take the opportunity to look over the council rules. In addition, so to kick it off, there had been some discussion about ordinance committee. I'd sent an email to the council with regard to how we want to proceed with ordinance committee. Continue, roll it into the regular council meetings. I only got one response. Counselor Allenson was very gracious to offer to chair that committee, so I defer to her on her thoughts.
So, my thoughts are regarding ordinance. I think that, and, you know, recognizing that we don't always have ordinance, right? It's sometimes we have stuff come up, sometimes we don't. So, at first, we were, you know, we were kind of tossing around, do we just roll it into normal council meetings? It being 9:30 right now, with a fairly, you know, large agenda, you know, these meetings can get very long and a little bit contentious. I worry about our ability to provide enough input and brain power. As you can see, I'm losing word recovery at this hour. So, that was yesterday's word of the day, word recovery. So, I thought maybe we could do, what would the, and I'd like to put it out there, what would the appetite be to have ordinance become virtual meetings? And I offered to be chair. I'm happy to defer if somebody else prefers it, but I do see some work that I want to talk to the Law Department about anyways. So, I offered to be chair if that was, if there was an appetite for that. And I said, you know, we could set the cadence at monthly, or we could set the cadence at every other month. I don't have a problem either way, but I think at least having the first discussions with the subcommittee of the council to, you know, hash out some of the, like, questions that we have has been useful in the past as far as ordinance was concerned. So, those were really my concerns. I didn't necessarily want to disband it altogether because we do tend to have a lot of questions when things come up. But, again, I would defer to my colleagues up here, who, many of whom have been longer on the council than I have.
So, I guess there's a couple of questions here. So, one is, do we want to, it's always been, since I've been on the council, it's been a group of the whole, but that's not necessarily the direction this needs to go in because usually, you know, you have a committee, it's a subdivision of the larger body. You don't really have any specific powers as the committee, but, you know, you could certainly make recommendations or work through things to get to the full council. So, that's one. And then, your other question was on the cadence of how often we want to have the meetings. So, Counselor Fishbein?
There is, sorry, one more. I'm sorry, Counselor Fishbein. And then, making it virtual.
And virtual, right.
So, I would prefer just to have an area of the regular agenda that has something, if there's something. I mean, when ordinance does meet, sometimes it does get meaty because ordinance doesn't always meet. So, I think in the last year, there's been maybe five ordinance committee meetings, but there's been a significant number of town council meetings. So, if you merely, you know, have a section of the agenda that is ordinance, I think it would be, in the long run, more efficient. Because ultimately, I mean, our two, the two main powers that we have, or the major powers that we have, are to create legislation ordinances and to work on the budget along with the administration, right? So, to have a subset of this body then overtaking a lot of stuff that is our main charge under the charter, I think it's just going to end up with stuff like the fair rent thing. Like, traditionally, attendance at ordinance has not been great. I know when I was the chair of ordinance for, like, four years or something like that, we actually had to get the rules changed. The quorum had to be reduced specifically for that committee to three on a body of nine. You know, we were all members of that. So, I think it would increase attendance also. I do agree, virtual may be a, may be helpful here. But if we're all generally here for council meetings, and we all know, I don't see why it just can't be on our agenda, we deal with it that way. I mean, the Law Department is here, certain things we can defer to them, we can table to the next meeting. I just think it would be more sufficient, more efficient. And I just point out that there is no requirement under the charter or ordinance that I'm aware of that requires us to have an ordinance committee.
So, and that was how I first envisioned, is that ordinance would just be, you know, we'd add it to the meetings. However, if you look at some of the issues that we've tackled, and there haven't been a lot of issues, but a few of the issues, like the fair rent thing and the tax break for seniors thing, it did take a few meetings, and there was some, like, outside discussion and whatnot. So, it might be more efficient to have a sort of a means to not bring all nine of us, you know, have us all sit through all these meetings to talk about it, but sort of work some of those issues out in advance, strategize with residents and so on, and then, you know, bring a finished product to the end.
So, I'm going to say something, and somebody's going to clip it out. So, I'm going to say it, I'm going to say it with that, so they, you know, get ready to clip it out. But I've been the problem, right? So, with the fair rent situation, right? You guys all met, you guys all talked about it, you guys all made these decisions, I couldn't make those two meetings. And then, when it came to the council, you know, I said, you need to make all these changes, right? And you guys graciously deferred and, you know, gave me time to work on that. And then, I, you know, brought it back. And then, you had an ordinance committee meeting that you knew I couldn't be at, where it got, like, ramrodded. And then, it came to the council for actual ratification, and, you know, that procedure should not happen. So, but if I was the problem with regard to that taking so long, I'll tell you that the senior thing, I wasn't at the ordinance committee meetings, having to do, I think it was relatively quick. I mean, the first one, I think, was a lot of public input, and then there was drafting of language.
Yes.
Yeah. And then, ultimately, what came before the council, you know, I was okay with. But I just think it just becomes more cumbersome.
Just so we're clear, I would not characterize any member of this council as the problem. However, that being said, I understand how you feel about the fair rent commission thing. But ultimately, you know, you can't schedule the meetings around everyone's individual schedule, right? And so, there wasn't the flavor to proceed in the manner that you had intended. But I don't perceive it as the problem. I think if you wanted to sit in the ordinance committee, that would be fine, and you certainly have the legal acumen to do that. What's the, I'd like to hear from some other folks. What's the, Mr. Lafferty?
So, I think, I'm kind of going to start just at the beginning, go through the whole thing. I think keep it on a, holding a time like we do now. If we don't meet, we don't meet. I, you ran at the last couple of terms. Did you ever not have a meeting because there was only one thing and just push it to another month?
Yeah, I think a couple of times, sure.
So, I mean, there's something to be mindful of that if we're concerned about time, because some of those meetings, they take, like, two-plus hours. We don't want to add that on tonight. Aside from the time, I've said this so many times, like, this council for the last 10 years is, like, a one-and-a-half-good-topic council at best. And if you're going to start adding our main responsibility, which is writing laws, on to the meetings at, like, 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night, we got out of here after midnight twice in the last year. I think that's a mess. And it's requiring of the Law Department to be here at those times specifically, and particularly Attorney Small. Because I believe you really handle most of that, that law stuff, writing the ordinances. You know, I think the fair rent commission, that, that was a, that was a pain. But I think part of that was just the timeliness. We were already over our line, and we needed to get it done. It could have gotten done before that. It didn't, it took longer. We can still go back and keep talking about it. Like, it's not a done deal, wash our hands and walk away. Like, I don't know why it's not on the next ordinance meeting. If there's all these things we can still put through. I mean, I don't think they've pulled any triggers yet. Like, there's still time, but we're not, we are now in compliance with the law. I think the bigger issue, my frustration, is that it is convenient to have a meeting and then find out that, well, there's a lot of issues. Okay, kick it to ordinance, and we're going to meet, instead of rehashing it out. I think the other issue then becomes, like, if we have the public hearing, if something from the public comes out that we've not thought of, then I think the solution would be, that's a great comment, and if we can't fix it in 90 seconds, then it automatically goes back. Why are we rushing to make laws unless we have some sort of statute of limitation like we did for the fair rent? Attendance quorum solves the attendance issue. I think everybody should stay on at nine. In that way, you know, if Counselor Fishbein has an intense interest in the fair rent, then he can either, I don't know if he adjusts many times, or he goes to those. But if he doesn't about gun control, because he completely trusts everybody else to make all the laws on gun control, then he doesn't have to go to those meetings or make such an effort outside of his already tough schedule. I'm not for making virtual rule, but I'm open to, you know, we have one item, we think it's going to take 25 minutes. We're going to have, you know, the chair decides, we're going to have a virtual meeting. But there may be issues where we really should be here in person, people are going to show up. And it's very cumbersome to run those over virtual sessions anyway. Haven't done that before. I think that covers the basic points.
Any other thoughts on this, Mr. Keston?
There was a desire, there was an interest, I seem to recall there was a desire, your mic, it's on or off? There was a desire to just sort of go over all the ordinances. It's almost like it was time to take a look at the ordinances. Some had been there forever, and I think there was just, it was, the intent of setting up an ordinance subcommittee was to review all the ordinances. Or at least take a look real quick. No, 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 yes, yes. There wasn't any great desire to make new laws. There was a desire to go through the ordinance book and see what needed to be updated. So, and because it was going to be a rather lengthy, ongoing operation, there was, we had a subcommittee. And then, the advantage of subcommittee meetings is that they're not regular meetings. You can't take action as a council, especially with a less than nine. And there were multiple subcommittees that got together to do different things. So, it was just, it was just a way of doing business then where you had subcommittees that would get together on off nights and work things out in discussion. But you couldn't take any action, clearly. And then, eventually, you'd say, okay, we're ready to pass it on to the full council. It's very similar to the way the board works. They have, they're always reviewing policy. So, I think it was just a matter of it worked best that way, because we're always taking up a different ordinance and one or two at a time. And having the subcommittee meetings worked well. Okay, you weren't under any pressure, but we kind of got through all that. Now, the only reason you have need for an ordinance committee meeting is if you have to change an ordinance, or you decide you want to make a new law. That's not an ongoing thing. It just happens when it happens. So, there isn't even a real need to have a standing, ongoing committee that meets regularly. It should be meeting as needed. Now, that leads to, do we do it at a regular meeting, or do we have a separate subcommittee meeting? I don't care one way or the other, but I would say this, if you wanted to take them up at regular council meetings, it would be really important that you do one at a time. In other words, add an agenda item for a discussion of disorderance. But you have to do it in such a way that it's clear you're not taking action. You don't intend to take action. So, can you still operate the same way? I suppose you can, but it's nice having different rules, because then, I'll take this one. There's a limit to how much public comment is going on, almost like a budget workshop. You welcome the public input when you get to that point, but a subcommittee workshop allows just back and forth, back and forth, hashing it all out. And then, you go to a regular meeting to consider adopting it, and that's when you are, it's like a public hearing, you're, you're, you're having public input. So, I think you just need to think about, you know, what would work best, what's really necessary, and take it from there. I, you know, I don't mind having, you know, having us say we're going to add discussion of an ordinance as the last item on an agenda. Tom makes a good point, you know, you'd be here a long time. And I honestly don't, and as Autumn said, I don't think we'd be at our best as far as being clear-headed, open-minded, you know, fresh, to talk about wordsmithing, all those good things that happen.
And then when it would come before the full council, we would spend another several hours explaining and rehashing everything that had already been done at the committee level. So for those of us that were there at every meeting, it felt like we were just doing double the amount of work for those who weren't attending. So that was my frustration with it, and that's why I was hoping that we just would deal with it at our usual meetings. However, I understand the concern that, you know, if you're making laws at 11 o'clock at night, it's maybe not the greatest idea. But it is one of our biggest jobs. So, I mean, we're the legislative branch. So we, you know, we make the laws and, you know, that's one of our biggest responsibilities. So I do like the fact that everybody's involved on it the way it is now. I think one of my concerns maybe is that the way it is now is that they're not televised, which might be another good reason to have it as part of a regular council meeting. I don't think we want to ask the TV crew to come to another meeting. But I do think it's important for the public to understand and see the discussion when we're making laws. So, you know, I'll go along with whatever everyone wants to do. But like I said, I just... my concern is with low attendance at the committee level. Or even if it's a smaller committee and there's only three people on it, it's the same... I think it'll be the same outcome where you're redoing everything at the general council meeting for... to explain to everybody else who wasn't there the rationale. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Anyone else's thoughts on that?
I appreciate all of the comments that were made. You know, the problem with a subcommittee of the whole that ultimately is going to have to deal with the product of that subcommittee is let's just say that three people from this body are appointed to this subcommittee. They have the power to vote on a particular initiative, something advancing, something going to the council. But if a fourth member of this body attends that meeting and is recognized, they have no vote. Or let's just say the other six of us attend that meeting. So now the three individuals that are actually the subcommittee, I think that the people up here would be open to whatever comments from those six. But ultimately, it is that minority of this body that is determining the fate of that initiative. And that just seems like the pyramid upside down. So I agree that perhaps, you know, we can put into the rules only one ordinance can be dealt with on an agenda. You know, maybe, you know, certainly give the chair discretion. You know, because some changes are, quite frankly, minor sometimes. But, you know, then we have the fair rent thing, which was like a totally, totally new thing. But I also would point out, I would request that if we go that way, that it's clear on the agenda that it's discussion of a possible ordinance. It's not discussion and passage or something like that. Or it is, right? So that the general public knows when this is becoming law or this is in the, you know, the recipe, putting it together sort of stage. But I still think that's the most efficient way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think, I'm going to say again, I think it's as simple as it's form of three. All members are on there. There's a chair. Whoever shows up votes, majority rules. And we can make it a rule, or it can just be a councilor's agreement that if you're hot on an issue, on that topic or on that law, on that ordinance, then you're going to go to that meeting. You're going to discuss it. You're not going to show up after the public hearing and then add 90 minutes to the conversation when you missed all the prior discussion. The Board of Ed, they do a lot of their stuff in the, you know, instructional committee meeting, right? They do all their policies. That just consents through. They don't discuss it again at all. Like, it's just... they read off like A through J, consent done, gone. If we want to do that, like, no council discussion once you get to the full meeting unless there's a direct... Actually, it was Counselor Reynolds, like, you had a comment about during the Fair Rent Commission that everybody was like, well, you know, we didn't think about that. So that put a pause on it. Aside from the additional materials that Counselor Fishbein had, that would be an opportunity to be like, all right, can't get back to the next meeting. And by having, I think by having a set first Tuesday or whatever, no, we're not going to meet all the time. But we know that that's basically the ballpark. That's when it's going to be if we're going to have one. So everybody can kind of keep tentative on their schedule. I know that helps for my planning. I didn't make the second fair rent one, the kickback one, because it was off-schedule and on a weird day. And I just couldn't... and I didn't have any of the changes, but I trusted whatever was going to come out of it. And that was on me. That was on my decision. Anyway, that's what I think.
So it's sort of true on Board of Ed that they have... So Board of Ed has policy, then they have instruction, then they have the full Board of Ed. Board of Ed actually has a separate policy group that meets and does their first reads. Then it goes to two instructional meetings, then it goes on consent in the full... For the full board to essentially ratify it, and that's when it goes on consent. So technically, the board talks about it three times, not including the first read that goes through policy. So, like, I totally... but, you know, to all of other Counselor Laffin's other points, it's, you know, I just... Again, I'm not really married to this idea. Like, it seems like there's not an appetite. So it is what it is. I'm going to vote for it, but at the same time, I don't like... If it's disappointing, it's disappointing, right? And if it happens in a council meeting, I would just ask that maybe we do it towards the front of a council meeting instead of now. So, you know, we can do executive session really late.
Thank you. Janice?
Well, first, let me say that it really is a sign of the apocalypse that Councilman Fishbein is a Taylor Swift song. It's me, hi, I'm the problem, it's me. Kudos to you, sir.
I would not have picked up on that.
But so purely selfish issue, I can't write something at 10 o'clock at night. I'm a morning person. I write in the morning. So any night meeting is bothersome to me, but 10 o'clock at night, and to do something of substance at the end of a council meeting. You know, this one looked like it was a short meeting, didn't it? I mean, but if you read it and have experience, you know it wasn't going to be. But it's very deceiving how long your meetings can last when you think it might be simple. It's not. You know, the Fair Rent Commission, which by the way, you'll all be getting a memo from me reminding you that you need to appoint them, that was a very complicated thing to do. To talk about, to write, to react to. So to do that at the end of a regular council meeting, I mean, unless it truly was a light meeting, I just... I really... I don't think that's the best solution. I mean, you can do it that way. You certainly can do a combination of what everybody was saying, that you appoint a chairperson. Maybe you have a couple of set meetings, but you don't necessarily. I mean, I've worked with all the chairmen of these committees, and, you know, we would have a conversation. Do you... does it need to be this month? Do you have anything? Can it wait till next month? Or what have you got? I want to add this. So that can continue. But I really... the idea of doing something... now, I've been here long enough. I've been on a regular basis to these meetings after midnight. They were done on a regular basis for a period of time. And it's... that's not a time to be thinking about how you're writing a law that then you want to apply to all the towns' residents. So it's something to think about, but maybe some combination of all that you've discussed might work. Or you can... you certainly can try something, and then if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. You can make a decision on a per-ordinance basis. If I hand you something like the Fair Rent Commission, you say, oh, my goodness, we need a special meeting for this. If it's, you know, changing just a few words, then no. But so maybe something in between what everybody's talking about, you can come up with something.
I was just going to also say that if we did some sort of a virtual option for ordinance, since it would be kind of like the first pass is how I view it from my days on Board of Ed, which they also meet virtually, just so you know. But if we did something like a virtual meeting, we could record it, and then I could give it to the public media to put onto YouTube as well, which is kind of like they did the recordings for the ARPA committee. So it wouldn't be necessarily live if it was still like a workshop style. I mean, I'm happy to manage it as a workshop style. I'm very good on Teams. I know how to mute people. It's great. But other than that, you know, it's not that difficult to...
So the Board of Ed, at least presently, doesn't allow much comment. So I just want to say that. I like what Janice said. I mean, we could have, and it could be in the rules, that, you know, you're approaching 11 o'clock. We have an ordinance that's on the agenda, but, you know, it's not burning down the house. And, you know, the chairman says, you know, looking at the clock, is there any objection to tabling this for the next meeting, is an appropriate action, you know, given concern for brain cells? Or if it's a big lift, like the fair rent thing, you know, we're going to know or maybe at the suggestion of the Law Department, you have some sort of a special meeting just to deal with that.
You know, I hate to have to be, with all due respect, at your meetings for one item that then gets canned because it's gone... the meeting's gone. I mean, I don't think that's an efficient way to do it, because if you have a meeting on an ordinance, you're all focused on what that meeting is about.
No, I'm saying so you have a council agenda.
Yeah, you put it on... you put the ordinance on. It gets to 11 o'clock. If I'm here for that one item, I'm not going to be up. For you then to say, guess what, we're not going to do it tonight. I mean, I've prepared for it. I mean, when I... when we do these things, there's a lot of work that goes into before you show up. And to show up and do it at so late at night that, and then somebody says, well, you know, we'll just put this off to the next meeting.
Well, maybe I've never noticed before. Is there occasion where Attorney Farrell is there for the regular meeting and then you're just here for something?
Well, I'm usually here for enough things. It depends. There could be that scenario where I don't have to... if I... I mean...
Because I can't think of a... I mean, I don't know how your office operates, but if, you know, if there's an item on that particular council agenda and it's an ordinance, and it's something that, you know, you're working on, are you saying that Attorney Farrell would sit that meeting and then...
Usually, I will tell him I'll just do the meeting.
Yeah, so I...
But I'm just doing... but then I'm still in the same situation. I'm only there to do that ordinance, and if you never get to that ordinance, then I've been here and prepared. I mean, this is totally selfish on my part.
All right, so in the interest of moving this along, though, I don't foresee a scenario where we're going to put something on an agenda and then kick it to the next meeting because we run out of time, especially if there's members of the public and so on, because I don't think that's fair. But so let's just take, by show of hands, let's just say who's in favor of having a separate committee for ordinance, period? Okay, so that's the vast majority. So who would be in favor of having it be a body of the whole as it is now, by show of hands? As opposed to subdivision? Okay, so that's that. So then, all right, Mrs. Allison expressed interest in being the chair, so I would say we would leave the cadence exclusively up to her in terms of when we meet, because if we... I know we have LoSAP coming up and maybe a couple other items, but nothing else. And then in terms of virtual versus...
The bike ordinance, is that still kicking around? Sorry, I might... what I said, just for the sake of the...
I don't...
The bike ordinance.
I'm not sure what kicking around is, but I do have to come back with the tax ordinance, so...
So let's go back to the topic, though, and we can talk about that stuff later. So the... so is anyone want the meetings to be exclusively in person? Let's ask the question that way. So by show of hands, if you want the meeting exclusively in person, as opposed to any option for a virtual meeting? Okay, so that... okay, so then I would say we would leave it up to Chairwoman Allison as far as the cadence, and then virtual versus in-person, depending on the circumstance of whatever the item is.
Keep in mind, because Counselor Fishbein had made the comment, well, what if it's three people and they're voting on something and the other people don't have... You can't vote on anything.
Right.
That's the whole point of this subcommittee. The only way you can have a virtual meeting not open to the public is if you're not taking action.
Wait, I don't think anyone...
No, 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 no. It's a public meeting.
Right, 100%.
And it actually does, under the law, have to be recorded. But for example, when I bring back the senior, the tax ordinance, you know, that would, I would think, would be public, because you'd have those people wanting to come, and they may not have access. But so that would be a judgment you'd make on a case-by-case basis. But if it's done remotely, it is still a public meeting. You still have to... you do have to record it. And if someone does not have access to a computer or anything to watch the meeting, then the town has to provide that access in this building somewhere. So that's the status of the law.
And you are voting. Voting... you're voting, at the very least, to advance the initiative to the council.
You're taking a consensus.
No.
Yes. That's how we always word it. What's the consensus? You're not actually...
I recall having votes...
But you're passing it on to the full body.
Yes, but that is...
So the full body... the power is in the full body.
Understood, but there is...
I mean, there's nothing the committee's going to do that the full body...
I'm just saying, there are votes that have been traditionally been taken by that body. So I'm just saying.
But they're not... all they...
Understood, understood.
They're not binding to the ordinance.
I never said it was, but there are votes taken.
There are procedural votes. They're not binding.
All right, so next topic.
Wait, before we get there, can we just have some sort of rule that we have some, like, reasonable advance notice that there's not going to be a meeting? Because I got to tell you, I block out all those Tuesdays every month, and we haven't met in four months. So, and I get people who, you know, can we get at least a week's notice? I mean, sometimes we get like a day's notice.
So I think the thought was, instead of going to a monthly meeting, it's an ad hoc-as-needed meeting. And we could certainly make a rule of what the requirement is, like a two-week notice before having the ad hoc meeting, if that makes sense. Or you could specify a night of the week. It's got to be a Tuesday, you know, first or third Tuesday.
So you're telling me that every time it is determined that a meeting is going to be necessary, someone's going to have to poll as far as availability? There is no set date?
Well, you know, because the situation we had is we'd have the meeting, and then you don't have an attendance of only a few people.
Well, that's why I was against where you are now, because we know when the council meetings are going to be, right?
Right.
So I'm... you know, you're making it even more difficult if, you know, every time you've got to reinvent the wheel as far as scheduling, as opposed to right now, it's like the first Tuesday of every month is supposed to be ordinance, but it doesn't happen. So I would be a lot more comfortable with something like that.
Jesse first, then Vinnie?
I was going to just suggest that you assign a day and time, and then the advance notice just goes out as to whether or not the meeting's going to occur. So if you just sit, excuse me, say it's the first Tuesday of the month, and it's always the first Tuesday of the month, but you have to be made aware that it will be happening as opposed to canceling, kind of like passive assent. That was my only thing.
Fair enough. Autumn?
So I can tell you that I will just follow the chairman's schedule as we do now, which is you set the meeting the Wednesday before, and the notice will go out. If there is something on the calendar to review, then we will have a meeting. I'm guessing that between today and tomorrow, I'm not going to meet with Janice to discuss all of the things. So probably there's not going to be a meeting on the first Tuesday of the coming month. But I'll talk to Janice, and we'll see what... how soon all of these things are coming.
Okay, so we'll stick to the current schedule.
Correct.
And we'll assume the first Tuesday. Does that work?
And I will give you ample notice. You will not get notice a day ahead of time.
All right, good. I think that's that. Does anyone have anything else with the council rules, procedure that you wanted to discuss?
It's my day to be unpopular. So it's going to... So I just had a kind of sticking point ever since I joined the Board of Ed and would watch these at home, and then I would watch the budget meetings. And we kind of get a lot of people on the public comment side opining when there isn't a breadth of other commenters. And we have a rule on the council, in the council rules, that says there's a three-minute limit per question. per question. I was wondering if there was an appetite from anyone else to limit the person three minutes per question, or three to five minutes per person, per speaker? Because at times, the, at, first of all, it, I think it would help people be, be prepared in their arguments, or the things that they, the points that they wanna talk about. Um, second of all, um, sometimes we're hearing about things repeatedly that don't necessarily have anything to do with something we're dealing with at the time, and it could also be something that could be handled via an email or a simple phone call to any of us, to the mayor's office, or the departments that are concerned. Um, and it has a lot more to do with, um, I think that the chairman can, can, uh, use his... discretion, that's the word, um, when it comes to hot topics, like the dedication for Iris Papale and, and things like this, um, to not only let people go on a little longer, or when we have new speakers, to let them talk a little bit longer, but we have a lot of the same people, essentially, who come in here, and while some of their points are great, sometimes it sounds like we have actually 10 to 12 other, uh, 10 to 12 counselors on here. Um, and I don't necessarily think that the comments are always constructive. I, I defer to earlier tonight. So, um, it's not my attempt to not want to hear from the public, um, but it is my judgment that, at times, we give people a lot of leeway to discuss topics that are irrelevant.
Okay, so thoughts on the idea of limiting speakers to a particular amount of, uh, to one, you get one shot at the mic essentially for the, for the, the three-minute or whatever time? Thoughts?
I just wanna point out that I think under the rules presently, public comment is, is limited to agenda items. So, public comment is addressed in Roman 4. It says, "With the exception of the consent agenda, public input on individual items will be received, yada, yada." And then individuals wishing to speak on individual agenda items will be required to address their questions or comments to the council chairman limit. Am I in the right section?
No, I think she, I think she's referring to Section 3, where it just talks about the public question and answer period, about midway through the paragraph. So it says you'll be able, allowed to ask one question at a time, and then if time remains, you can return to the mic and ask additional questions until the 20 minutes have expired. So I think what she's proposing is that you have, you have one bite at the apple to ask all your questions in one set amount of time.
And that set amount of time, I heard two numbers, 3 and 5. So, um, I just, it says right now, limit his, his or her speaking time to a maximum of three minutes. What is the proposal?
My proposal would be that if we have these instances where, um, we have no other takers, that we limit the person to five minutes as a person. They can ask, you know, any questions they have, because ultimately, we do get questioned by firing squad regardless of those three minutes. It's not usually just one question. So I would say if, I mean, three minutes, or I would say five minutes per speaker, as opposed to limiting it to a question, because three minutes per question, I mean, that gives a lot of time for discussion that might not be needed. A lot of times, we don't have the answer.
So I'm just looking at the sentence at the end of Roman 3. Each individual wishing to speak will address their questions or comments to the council chairman, and limit his or her speaking time to a maximum of three minutes. So they only get three minutes? That, that's the way I read this. Am I, is there something I'm?
I mean, sure, but tonight, we also didn't follow that. I mean, and this is the history, right? We haven't followed that historically. We have allowed people to continue to ask questions for 20 minutes if nobody else has any questions.
Yeah, and I think the problem, because that 20-minute section, oh, question, it would be a maximum of 20 minutes, this time may be extended by the discretion of the chair. I'm in Roman 3 once again. So maybe the, the motion or the initiative is, is to hold the public to what the rules presently say. We're, we're not looking for a change in the rules, right?
I suppose so.
I, I mean, that, uh, if the request is just that I limit each speaker to three minutes, period, then I, that, I think that's a reasonable request, and I don't think it needs, necessarily needs a change of the rules. Because I, I guess I agree with Craig. My interpretation of this on the first reading is sort of like how the precedent that we had set, but, but you're right, that's not what it says. So, I'm sorry, Tom, go ahead.
I think one problem that's developed is that, that period of time is not a question and answer period. It is a speech-making period. It's an opportunity for the public, always has been, an opportunity for the public to ask a question about something that's not on the agenda. Question and answer. And the fact that it was 20 minutes was, seemed to be reasonable to allow as many people as wanted, that wanted to ask a question to be able to. Extended at the chair's discretion implies there might be eight or nine people that wanna take a three-minute time slot and ask a question. That's legitimate. It does not mean, oh, we haven't gone through 20 minutes left yet, so you can come back and say more, because no one else wants to speak. It's frankly, and I, this is not a criticism, we have gotten where we've gotten through how those rules have been enforced. And again, that's discretion. So if we wanna see those rules enforced, uh, that's very easy. Do it. Right? You do it.
Right.
Um, and not in a way to say we don't wanna hear from you, because if you're here for an agenda item, you will have the opportunity to speak to it when the agenda item is being discussed. That period, that time is for people to just, and, you know, let's just say we didn't, the issue with the road wasn't an agenda item, that those two gentlemen, Mr. Rosati and the other gentleman, were here to say, I, you know, I'd like to ask a question about this. Now, granted, they're bringing a problem to the table, but they're asking a question, how do I handle this? Or, um, I have a question about, where are you at the pool? I have a question about this. It's not on the agenda, ask your question, you answer it, or the administration answers it, and it gets to something else in a minute. Um, and they have the three minutes to have that back and forth with us. It doesn't mean you have seven or six opportunities to spend three minutes-
Right.
-because you're the only one here, because we said it'll be 20 minutes. It's supposed to be 20 minutes to allow a lot of people to ask that question that they may have. Um, the only other thing that pops up a lot, and I'm, I'm okay with this, uh, we're not ever allowed to respond during that timeframe, probably for the best, but that's, the chair responds to those questions. And/or, you know, through the council, through the mayor, you know, uh, the mayor will respond. Um, that's something you may just wanna think about in the back of your head. You ever wanna open up the opportunity for any one of us? Because you, you really don't. But, yeah, right? Um, but I mean, that's, that's how it should be. And it's, it's, it, and it really should be a way for someone from the public to alert us to something that may become an agenda item down the road. I have a question about this. Let me look into that. Let me get back to you, and then maybe it'll be an agenda item. So I really think it's a matter of just enforcing the rules we have. No need for a change. We changed all those and went through the flack that came with it, but it works fine, I think, as long as it's enforced.
Well, you know, as, as an alternative, I'm happy to enforce the rules as, as written, and then we can revisit this in a few months, and if you think there's changes, we, you know, we, like, anyone can bring this up at any time and request a change, right? So, Chris?
So there's nothing wrong with us trying to appropriate $100 to get a timer, okay? No, 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 because it's a reinforcement thing that, uh, the clock's ticking, I have to get finished. So we'll have situations, you know, tonight, other nights that, that we've seen, you know, your clock's ticking, you want a 20-minute timer that tucks, comes on, or a three-minute timer that comes down, that says, okay, we're reinforcing the rules by the physical aspect of having that clock countdown. Why couldn't we just do something like that to enforce this issue? We'll have to read this issue, we'll have to explain what we're doing, and then just do something like that.
I think the clock's a good idea, too. I mean, I started the best of the, of the body, right? So if, if three minutes is the rule, then three minutes is the rule, and catch up at three minutes. Tom?
Definitely enforcement. If it was written this way on purpose, um, and a member specifically in the chamber, that's probably, um, he wanted to, very, very, even at the discretion of the chair, maybe that, and I voted against, uh, what was just, uh, two times, and, and still not being voted on, or, 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 so, um, I mean, when I would take over a meeting, I would try and serve-
Mike, your mic.
I would, when I would take over a meeting, I would try and serve under the precedent that had been set, but as we saw, you know, a couple of meetings ago, um, you just have to redirect them sometimes, like, what is the question? What is the question? Uh, and it's just enforcement. Um, and, uh, as also it's been stated, if somebody has a real problem with it, chair makes a ruling, and if it's egregious, any, anybody up here can motion to appeal the decision of the chair, and you can be overruled. Or you can ask for it if you wanna reinforce to the person at the mic. All right, let a, let a counselor speak up and say that you should continue speaking. Nobody ever does, and it continues. Um, I think it's all here, it's just, it's just on how the power is here, it's just how you decide to exercise it. But the first couple of meetings are important, because it'll set the precedent for all of the other ones.
Well, you know, I didn't wanna make any unilateral change without, again, sort of, sort of get the behest of the group, I didn't wanna make a unilateral change without having this discussion first. But if that's the intent, is the three minutes, then, then let's, we can run with that and, and, you know, see how it plays out.
The only, the only other thing I would look at changing is I would put the workshop thing back. We don't have of an actual method of having a meeting without public comment. They can be here and they can watch, but sometimes, like, like the budget workshops, they, we have the big public hearing, and everybody comes and asks questions, and then they come again, and they ask more questions, or you, then you can leave it at the discretion of the chair, but to have no vessel, um, for, for public comment. And then, you know, it depends on if they wanna be difficult. Like, uh, during 3J, we didn't go to the public.
We do, okay, but that, in fairness, that was my error.
Right, right. So, nobody, like, you know, um, you know, Garlick came up and, and said something later, but like, that, if it had been somebody else that was, is, is more difficult, they could've, they would've made a big deal, like, you're entitled and all this stuff. So, um, like, I'm, I'm good with the rules. I mean, we've been tweaking these things for 12 years now. So the only thing I would change is I would allow a workshop again, but other than that, it's all enforcement.
I agree.
Any else? Craig?
So I think it would, it's important to define, uh, what is the three minutes? So if somebody gets up and asks a question, and it takes whomever 10 minutes to answer it, I don't know that that should be held against them as three minutes. But on the other hand, if they get up and opine for three minutes, you know, I think that's the purest form of three minutes. So I don't know how the timer is going to parse, if, if that is our thought, that the question is counted against the three minutes and perhaps not the answer, um, I leave that up to- Well, I mean-
You just turn your timer on when they're talking.
I mean-
You turn the timer off when you're talking.
I can tell you, in, in the legislature, it's a hard three minutes, right? And, you know, and everybody can hear the bell, you can hear the bell on the recording, and it doesn't matter, you know, uh, they make their statement, perhaps there's questions, it's three minutes. Um, I, I just think it would be difficult and perhaps unfair to some people that have legitimate questions, and they get one question out, and it's like, you gotta come back next week, or it, it calls for a procedural motion by us to, you know, have the chair allow them to ask more questions. So I just throw that out there. I already addressed the bell. The budget workshops, you know, the, I think the value to allowing public comment at the budget workshops is, you know, when we ask questions of that particular department, you know, sometimes more information is given to the public. So, you know, the public, first of all, doesn't see the backup for the budget, right? So they go to the public hearing, and they've got the little book, right? That's all they got, a bunch of numbers, right? But they don't have the, you know, the letter, the actual request, this is why we want this, or something like this. So now, somebody from social services is here, and we're asking, you know, I got your backup, you know, it's a great project and all this stuff, and we, you know, we're getting more information. A member of the public could legitimately say, you know, based upon what I just heard, that I didn't have access to, I got questions, you know, or the fire department, you know, and stuff like that. We get the whole backup. The public doesn't really see that stuff. So I'm okay with the questions at budget workshops. And then the last thing which came up tonight, you know, Mr. Garlick came up and asked something about consent. Is there any reason why consent has to be at the beginning of the agenda? I mean, if it's, if it's consented to, and the items, it's, it's basically understood that they're pass-through items, they're all gonna happen, you know, unless somebody's like recusing themselves. There's no reason why it has to be at the beginning, so that way, a member of the public may have a question about something that's unconsent.
All right, but, but to put that all the way through, so when you take something off consent, then you, we would request response from the administration, right? So whether the consent's at the beginning or the end, if the department's not there to answer the question-
It, they may raise a question, like the gentleman asked a question tonight, that I don't think was supported necessarily by our backup. We may, at that point, have made a motion to table that particular item until more information was had. That was-
I see, I see what you're saying.
That was my only, you know, so I, procedurally, there's no reason why we have to dispose of that at the beginning. And I just, I've never had a situation like that before, so it prompted that thought. That's all I got.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't see a problem with having public comment before consent agenda, I guess, if that, that's just a, I mean, I guess that's the chairman's decision when you're making the agenda. Um, as far as the three minutes and the timer, I was, I was keeping a timer, um, today for the 20 minutes and the three, and for the three, I was pausing if there was a question, um, because that's how I understood it, that they get three minutes. Um, I will tell you, I believe every speaker today went over the three minutes, so it's not a long, it's not a long amount of time. I'm okay with having the, the public comment at the workshop meetings. Um, I think the budget workshops as a whole, that's probably a bigger discussion for another day, um, we've been kind of talking about. Obviously, that first one is, is a requirement, and I think as long as, um, the public knows that there may not be departments represented again at another workshop, because we may be doing things differently this year, then they should be asking their questions at that one. Um, that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Levin?
Uh, budget workshops, if, if we're gonna call them workshops, they're special meetings. It's fine. If it's better if the majority of people think that they want the public to be able to speak, um, and not function within, at the discretion of the chair, um, then they don't have to be considered workshops. Uh, my point, I meant my point to be that we have no vehicle right now to create a meeting that doesn't mandate that the public gets to speak on every, 20 minutes for every agenda item. Um, if we wanted to tonight, if they wanted to tonight, we could have two guys, or a couple people show up, and every agenda item would have been 20 minutes. Every motion that we made, 20 minutes. It takes, if we each took one minute to speak on every item, that's 10. And now you're gonna, you just add to 20. And there are plenty of times where people in the public, some members of the public, speak more than the counselors do. Um, I was just looking for a vehicle, not even that we would use it all that often, or maybe we'd go a whole year without using it. Just some sort of vehicle that it's possible, we could have a meeting, it's, it's open to the public, but where public comment is not entertained. The operations of the, of a three-minute thing, yeah, hardly anybody ever stays within three minutes, but it's not, I don't think it's a big, a big problem. Um, I think it's, that leads- I think it's, that leads to the discretion of the chair. Does it get dicey if you have this giant countdown clock and a buzzer? Probably then, but otherwise, they ask the question, the mayor takes 90 seconds to respond, there's a follow-up, and now, all of a sudden, you're approaching minute four or five. If that's the case, then that's, this probably wasn't the venue to ask the question. It probably wasn't really a question looking for an answer, it's a debate at this point. And it should probably be shut down. I think the three minutes is, maybe, it's on the low side, but then it just makes the chair look generous when he allows it to go beyond the three minutes. And it allows you to shut down the conversation and say, okay, well, you know what, follow up with the office tomorrow, give them a call, send them an email, whatever it may be. But I think three minutes, I think just keep it three, don't stop, run it straight through. And most of the time, they come back anyway, unless you're gonna completely stop that.
I mean, in fairness, though, outside of the public question and answer periods, it's very rare that the public is at all bothersome, you know, in terms of a regular agenda item. So while there's the 20 minutes, they could take 20 minutes on every item, they just don't, because it's just not really within, you know, it has to be germane to the motion, so it's never really an issue.
It's always one of the three people, you know, one of three people, it's never...
Right, but the issue really is the, from my perspective, is the just public question and answer, which becomes like open-mic night at times. But again, we're here to serve the public, right? So ultimately, you know, if that's how they feel best served, then that's sort of what our, a portion of our function.
Meriden, sorry. Meriden only does it once a month.
Public question and answer? I mean, the board of ed doesn't do it at all, right? Which is kind of like, to me, you're sort of like pushing on the boundaries of what's a public meeting at that point, right? So, even like the Meriden thing, if you do it once a month, I don't know, I don't know that I'd want to get into that. But again, it's up to the group. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, I'm sorry, I had Autumn on the schedule next, sorry.
So, for the question and answer, or whatever, period, I'm fine with it staying if it can be enforced. I get it, that three minutes seems to be a short amount of time, but we get two minutes each time we answer a question at the forums, and we have a one-minute warning, you know. It teaches people to get their point across quickly, come with bullets, be prepared. Anyways, from the workshop perspective, I tend to agree with Counselor Laffin, and I'm hearing that there may be some changes as far as the budget workshops are concerned. So, I guess I'll defer to that forthcoming. However, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I think that they're not very useful. So, especially in the forum that they are in, sorry, I just lost hearing in one of my ears. And, essentially, you know, the whole point of the public hearing on the budget is for, all of the departments are here, and we all have an opportunity to ask questions, and then they all have an opportunity, and whoever isn't, whoever, there's no appetite to question, is essentially sent home. So, I do think there is a vessel for that as part of the process. I do think it would be more collaborative from our perspective if we were able to talk about budget items more in kind of the forum that we've used tonight, where it's just in the absence of anybody being here that we've been able to kind of go back and forth and talk, speak normally, I think. And it, I don't know, it just seems more collaborative, in my opinion. I don't know if that has to do with just having an audience, and I know that I tend to, like, seek approval from the audience, just because of human nature, right? I'm looking for people nodding or shaking their heads. So, I don't know if that has anything to do with it, but I can say that if we made budget workshops like workshops again, we might get more out of the departments as well, as far as like what our questions are. And again, I don't, I look forward to the modified version, if that's forthcoming, thank you.
Thank you, Craig?
I would just caution the disparate utilization of the timer. Because we certainly don't want to get into a situation where one claims that they had more than three minutes, and, you know, more than five minutes, and stuff like that. I think it's helpful, like, in the legislature, when everybody hears the bell, everybody knows that's the three minutes, but the chair uses their discretion and says, can you please wrap up your comments? But, for nobody to know where that cutoff actually is, and then for you to all of a sudden say, oh, and by the way, you're two minutes over, I think potentially, this claims of disparate treatment, but anyway. The workshop, having a vehicle through which we could not have public comment, I just... I can't think of an example, at least during this last term, where we had an item that I would have been in favor of having a meeting without public comment. So, I mean, I opened, I, can anybody think of, go?
The Funeral Association, every budget term.
Oh, the Cemetery Association?
Yes, yes, that's what I meant.
Well, I mean, I'll just, I mean, I understand, because, you know, the former mayor, a long time ago, sent out a letter, and I think we've sent it out since then. You know, you're supposed to submit certain things, and there's been problems with not only that entity, but other entities. So, but, I mean, asking the question, maybe the way the questions are going about is improper, but, you know, shutting off and saying that nobody can ask... I just, I don't know. I don't share that feeling that there should have been a noticed meeting saying, you can't ask questions of that particular entity, or the other entities that fall on that budget page. I can't think of any other issue that we had, you know, certainly, we had a lot of meetings about ARPA and that kind of stuff. But many times, public comment on that stuff was helpful. So, I'm just trying to figure out where we would utilize that, given past history. I'll defer, I don't know if Autumn had...
I just...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I do just want to point out that the actual committee on ARPA, like, didn't have public comment. And I think you would have found that useful, but I can say, I mean, there are three people sitting here who were on it. So, respectfully, I can't say that, like, everybody voted on that committee not to have public comment. So, I guess I understand from my own perspective that that has been a useful vessel in some way.
The distinction there, though, is that was having individual applicants, and perhaps having those applicants hire attorneys to appear before that body to make presentations and that kind of stuff. We don't do that here. So, you know, Cemetery Association presents their thing to the mayor, the mayor puts it in the budget, and then, you know, it's a totally different process. I recognize the distinction, but the playing field is certainly different there, so, thank you.
Tom?
I see the potential value, if it's necessary for the council to get to a certain point in conversation, before public comment, maybe. Another part is the way that it's written now, it's any discussion point or agenda item versus maybe in a workshop format, like, it's where they come, and it's kind of like a privilege, it's germane, but it's not, get up and tell us what you feel about all of these issues with everybody else. And the ARPA example, I think that is good to demonstrate why it should be a tool in the toolbox, because, maybe we can't think of an example right now, but as you're often saying, when we're setting up something or agreeing to a contract, that you have to look at all the potential outliers. And there may be a situation where that becomes important. Like in an interview, right now, technically, if we're interviewing a candidate for a position that we're appointing, they have to, the public can comment, and that might not be appropriate. And we'd have to go into an executive session, and it's this whole balance of back-and-forth thing. So, I just, again, it's not something that I think we have to use all the time, or I think it's helpful to have. One year, we did have the public hearing on the budget after all of our workshops. So, that actually allowed everybody to see all of our hearings first, and then come educated at the end, closer when we were going full in. I actually preferred it better, it was not my decision. And it kind of happened by accident because of school break, was overlooked in the original schedule, so they just bumped it to the end of all of our workshops. So, if you're taking advice or recommendations for budget workshops, I would say put the public hearing at the end.
So, it's constantly be a consideration. The charter tells us when we have to have the public hearing by, though. So that, so I guess it becomes a function of when the mayor gets us the budget, you know. So, but I will certainly take another advisement and speak to the mayor about it, to see if there's any appetite to flip that around. I don't know what's going on behind me.
I got you. Well, this is easy, but there's, I found a few grammatical errors in the rules. Can I, is everyone okay if I just submit those as...
Sure.
I'd like to go first.
With whatever other amendments we have, as I typically do.
All right, wait, so...
This is practice for when we write laws this way, go ahead, where's the...
I'll send everybody the grammatical edits, and I don't think we'll need to vote on those unless anyone feels the need.
All right, so to get back, so Tom and Autumn have made a suggestion that there be a non, like, a workshop format. So, Madam Clerk, can you call the role on how people feel, should there, ought there to be a workshop format without public comment? So, a yes means that you support the workshop.
I think we need a motion on that, right?
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
I mean, like, should there be an opportunity for something called a workshop? Or are you suggesting there be workshops identified this evening?
I believe that...
You just asked for a vote.
Yeah, so the vote is on whether there should be the possibility to have a workshop that wouldn't include public comment at all. I haven't defined how that, you know, how we would apply that, but the suggestion was that it would apply to budget meetings potentially.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay, so, as I saw, there was some, you know, sort of two sides to it. So I just wanted to see if there's an appetite for that, and then we'll go from there. Well, that would be, well, we would have to just change the, we would have to change the rules to include it.
I believe the provision inserts public comment for workshops. So, we stopped calling them workshops, we just had regular meetings. All of our budget meetings since that inserted became special meetings regarding the budget. They were not called workshops anymore.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please.
Mallinson?
Yes.
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes. No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Marone?
No.
All right, but the motion passes, so I don't think we need to belabor this tonight. Would the proponents of the workshops like to propose language for the next meeting on workshops? And then we'll go from there.
Didn't we have language in the prior...
We did.
So we just resurrected.
Yeah, that's all, that's all we're gonna do.
Okay, so, go ahead, Jesse?
Well, it's after the vote, but I'm just, I'm kind of curious, though, the specific context in which a workshop, outside of budget, like, why there would be a reason to meet without having public opinion? Like, I'm, I can understand, like, I was one of the ARPA people that voted against the public comment piece, similar to what Counselor Fishbein said, but I'm just curious to know the sort of mechanism.
Yeah, so in the past, we had had meetings, I think Mr. Laffin brought up interviewing people for public celebrations was one thing. But I guess it could be anything, where the council felt we wanted to workshop something without public comment, you would have the opportunity to do so.
Okay, again, we don't have to.
Right, I, this is just the ability to...
But I never understood, right, we can, oh, no, we definitely want all the public to speak at all the workshop, the budget meetings, great. But to not have the opportunity, it just, that never made sense.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
I think it'd be important to acknowledge that any workshops would not have actions taken.
Right.
I mean, we would not, now, maybe we're thinking about, well, you're interviewing people, but any meeting where you're gonna actually make a motion and approve something, and it's usually either ordinance-related or funding-related, there's nothing else except appointments, those three areas, right? All of those, I think, would necessitate the opportunity for public input. So, and that would all be occurring at regular meetings. So, a workshop, I envision, is an opportunity to do just that. Let us just talk, and do what we're doing right now, back and forth, hashing out things, wordsmithing, brainstorming, whatever you want to say, just working on something. With the idea that, okay, we came out of here with some kind of consensus or idea, but if we want to see this lead to an action, then an agenda item has to be created, and then a public discussion has to take place before anything formal is adopted. And I think, I mean, as long as we keep that in mind. We're not, we're not trying to take an action here that will preclude the public from having a say on a decision we make.
100%.
You know, and it's important to stress that.
Thank you. Craig?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, a workshop usually, unless it's information gathering, is of some initiative of action. So, like, we're all heralding what we're doing here tonight, because the audience, there's nobody here, right? So, we're, some of us are saying, well, this is valuable, because nobody can say anything, because there's nobody here. But we may get done with this, and somebody goes to the microphone and says, you know, you guys didn't think about this. And that may spur additional conversation. And that's what I envision here. So, once again, I really don't see a value for not at least permitting public comment on anything, because even a workshop is gonna say, okay, we're done, we're done workshopping, we're gonna move it to the next step. That calls for an action. So, that's where this becomes problematic, and therefore, my no vote, but here we are, thank you.
All right, anything else on the council rules?
And this is, can we just remove the adopted January 14 to 1964 from the upper right-hand corner? Because it really doesn't, that isn't when this version was adopted.
We'll change it.
Can you, um...
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair?
It says the amendments, I thought.
Yeah.
It says the amendments.
Duly noted, that will come with grammatical errors.
Is the font okay, though, Times and Roman, or you want...
No, Garuda, everything in Garuda in 13.
Yeah, the italics on the second line, so...
All right, so nothing else on the council rules, then? I say no further business, this meeting is adjourned.